Unbelievable, I just caught that moon the last couple of days. A little distractions, everything that's going on. So with that, I'd like to, Thursday, November 6th, call this meeting to order. Christie, call the roll.
Seven o'clock on June 6th. Trustee Broccolino?
Here.
Trustee Van Colly?
Here.
Trustee Alba?
Here.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Here.
Trustee Porter?
Here.
And Trustee Kunkel?
Here.
I'd like to mention though that it's not June 6th, it's November.
I'm sorry, November 6th. Thank you. It was warmer.
What did she say?
Apparently June 6th. And it says...
You wish, she said. Okay. Please go in the voice for Leighton. Hey, I'd like to have motion accept the agenda.
So move.
Second.
The motion is second. I have a number of folks that have signed in for INS ordinance and we'll take that on as speaker that when we get to that ordinance. Presentations tonight. Oh, yeah. Christie, call the roll.
All right. Trustee Broccolino?
Yes.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
And Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Is someone here to accept?
Rocky?
Not, Rocky's not here.
Let's see him. Oh, they're here. Can you guys come up?
Hi. Very good.
How are you?
Very good.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, nice to have you with us. So our proclamation tonight, whereas Hanover Park is home to a wide range of enterprises, from family-owned shops and neighborhood restaurants to large employers and advanced manufacturers that collectively contribute to the community's economic vitality, innovation, and stability. And whereas small and locally owned businesses form the backbone of Hanover Park's economy, providing essential goods and services, supporting local jobs, and helping define the unique character and identity of our community. And whereas the success of these enterprises directly impacts our quality of life, ensuring vibrant commercial corridors, reinvesting in our neighborhoods, and strengthening local identity. And whereas the Village of Hanover Park proudly celebrates its vibrant and diverse community known as America's Global Village, a place where cultures, businesses, and families from around the world come together to build a thriving local economy. And whereas ensuring residents and visitors to shop locally during the holiday season on Small Business Saturday throughout the year helps small businesses survive and thrive, retaining more dollars in our local economy, helps sustain Hanover Park's economic diversity, and supports the continued growth and sustainability in our community. And whereas since 2012, every state in the Union has endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and the Village of Hanover Park's Economic Development Committee and the Village Department of Community and Economic Development have championed Small Business Saturday. Now thy, therefore I, Rodney S. Craig, Mayor of the Village of Hanover Park and the Hanover Park Village Board, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 29th, as Shop Local Small Business Saturday at the Village of Hanover Park, and call upon all residents, how about that, to encourage friends and families to shop and dine locally, promote the unique goods and services offered by our local merchants. There you go.
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Let's take a photo together. Okay. What do you think? Thank you.
They have a special event coming up.
Greek wine tasting, it'll be next Thursday. We're trying to introduce something different in this community to be, I want you to be part of our family that we're creating, be part of Hanover Park. We're trying to introduce something different with our personal experience and make Hanover Park a destination for all the people that are around the different villages to come and see what we do.
And the name of your business?
The Raki Restaurant.
Yes.
You know, we have in the Cretan cuisine, we're trying to introduce something traditional and modern Greek cuisine and something different for this neighborhood.
My wife and I had lunch there today.
You all welcome to come and see us again.
Raki Restaurant is a new traditional Greek restaurant and I sure enjoyed my lunch there. Thank you for coming. Town Hall, I have one recipient. All the others will come in a little bit later. Hank? You put one word here. Okay.
Let's see if I get this right. Okay, how am I gonna do this? There you go. Okay. All the women in Hanover Park Police Department, while they have a union, but it's not really a union, and the police department, they have a union, I think, I think I rather belong to their union, but you know, what are you gonna do? Let's say all the women in Hanover Park Police Department, they got a union, you know, one guy represents them, but it's not really a union, it's just somebody speaks up for you. But, and unions cost money too, but we got the money, this is a wealthy country, they got plenty of money, they don't know what to do with it. But I figure we can use the money to help the people, maybe they'll want to fight for us if we helped them. You know, it makes sense, you know, if somebody, if the country helps me, man, I'm going to die for the country. If the country don't help me, I don't want to die for the, well, I don't want to die for the country, but what are you gonna do? Oh, that's right, I only give five minutes. So let's say all the, all the women in, oh, in the municipal building, all the women were union, okay, and the police officers weren't, police officers weren't union, it could debate, it could be debated in a law, a court of law, that the, that the guys want to be union and being discriminated so they can sue the village for saying that being discriminated. At this moment, I promised the women they're gonna be union, well, it's gonna take me a while, maybe by the, by the time that I pass away, maybe I can accomplish it. If somebody wants to listen, but if they don't want to listen, I just can't do, I can't do what's impossible. You know, so if all the guys are not union, be complaining, hey, why are these women union? And we're not union. And then they're, then they become union and they... There was this guy in Cuba, he made all his employees make money so he can get more money. The manager said, well, if they get paid more, I get paid more. So he made sure that the, that the workers making more money, so he get more money. And that's about it, you know, they should be union, it shouldn't cost that much, you know, it's something that, and the manager should be union too. We don't want to have this thing of us against them, the management against the workers and the, oh, we gotta work together if we want to, if we want to make it in this world. And, you know, we work together, if we work together, not the management against the management against workers. And there's no union complicity in trucking nowadays, I mean, there's only a few of them, so there's not much you can pick from. But you can't go on strike, even if you're a union trucking, you can't go on strike. You go on strike, the whole dock is full of freight, like it's all over, you come back a month later, there's no work. You know, the labor actually put a rope over their necks and they hung themselves because they, they shouldn't have gone on strike. I know you can't make the company pay more money, but you know, you can get the accountant, as a, as a union man, you get the accountant, tell him, hey, this is, you, you, you're making all this money, we want a piece of the pie. Like my dad said, you know, he wants just a piece of the pie, he wants to, you know, of course he wants the whole pie, but you know, he'll take a piece of the pie and everybody's happy, we're all making money, we're all living well, we're enjoying life. You know, it's not just surviving, you gotta also live and have, you know, you gotta live because if you don't live, it's not just surviving or just live, you gotta do both. You survive some of the time, some of the time you live. It's like the GIs, you know, like in Blackout now, they go deliver food to these guys, they're starving, and they see war hogs, and they shoot one whorehouse, you see the war hog and you see them putting in the skulls, those guys, man, I don't want to be in special forces, those guys know how to live. And if I die, I'd live in them, they'll remember me because I trained them, and they trained me, and we're all happy. Because we, all we want to do is live and create a peaceful world and feed people. If we feed people, if we feed our enemies, they can't shoot us, they're gonna get the food. And the other thing I want to talk about is, what else I want to talk about? I think about, that's about it from now.
You don't need to use all five words.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm trying to think, I was gonna talk about something else too. Well, well, I hope, I hope the panel here sits down and say, hey, let's make these women unions so I don't have to talk no more.
Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute, the flags over there are better, better, okay. Let's say, you know, there's no, there's no enemies, you feed your enemies, they have to work for you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good day, guys.
Okay. We've had our town hall, I'd like to just reiterate those here for the issue of ICIS.
Seven eight nine.
Carmen?
Seven eight nine.
We'll be with seven eight nine when we get there. So thank you. Those Presidents' Report, pretty marvelous week in Hanover Park. A grant was issued to one of our businesses in town called Elite RF. They do some pretty top secret work for the federal government, and they received a federal grant for a little over forty-eight thousand dollars in town. So a few of us were happy to be there to celebrate with them on that reception. It's a growing company and they like Hanover Park as a home. Second, I was at Hanover Highlands School the other day, and a very prestigious national recognition for their work supporting collaborative, special events and providing leadership that was just outstanding. There were people there from the National Program, there were people there from the Superintendent, they asked the mayor to say a few words, so I was happy to do that, presented them with the proclamation. But the guidance that they believe in and they model, and I'm gonna read it short, "They pledge to look for the lonely, the isolated, the left out, the challenged, and the bullied. I pledge to overcome the fear of difference, of replacing it with the power of inclusion. I choose to include." That's a great statement for those students at Hanover Highlands, I was proud to be a part of that. And we had a grand opening yesterday at the Old Salem Special, a new hair salon place, and they are all enthused about opening there. They're part of a larger neighborhood back behind them, Old Salem is a growing area, and so they're pretty excited, it was nice to welcome them to the community. And we received some recognition from one of the top communiques, a letter of support for Latino businesses. Hanover Park came in, I don't know, third or fourth on that list, they came out and they did an interview, and it's in an article that we'll be sharing closely. So I was really pleased to receive that recognition. And thank you to our staff for that acknowledgement, and that was a nice photo of one of our staff members, so that was, that was excellent. And since our last meeting, I attended an ICE outreach with the staff of the Senator of Tammy Duckworth. Additionally, I met with the DuPage County Chairwoman Deb Conra and DuPage County State's Attorney Bob Burling. They composed a resolution which was a model for our own restoration, for our own resolution being presented this evening. The county has additionally added some signage, but the State's Attorney and the DuPage County Sheriff have articulated that it's understand the effort is unenforceable. I then spoke with Representative Fred Crespo, who with his daughter confronted ICE agents in Hoffman Estates. That quite made the news and was alarming to both the representative and his daughter, an attorney who is all over that issue. The experience is horrible for families being confronted. Representative Crespo went on to explain to me that signage that suggests a ICE-free zone is false and misleading. Any such sign on village property or on the door of a business is not enforceable and places families at risk who expect a safe zone. I've spoken with several in our business community, most recently Caputos, the ownership. Their best employees are not coming to work, some with thirty years working for them. Families are not coming out to shop, their ownership at Caputos are mad at this situation. Our resolution is an appropriate agenda item. Those seeking an ordinance need to understand that this is a village, we do not, we do not, can't read my own writing, cut an ordinance based on emotion or on non-factual data. We don't put misinformation into an ordinance. And should this board choose a mayor's proclamation, I am open to that in addition. And finally, Hanover Park, as your mayor initiated, a video for our immigrant community to know your rights in full cooperation with the local church. They also are feeling the effects of families just not coming to church on Sunday due to the fear that's out there. So with that, I'm pleased to see our audience, we have a full house tonight, I gotta give my notes to the clerk, so we type them, I don't even type them for myself. So with that, I'm moving to approve by omniscient, items on consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Thank you, Bernie. With that, Christie, call the roll.
Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter? Trustee Kunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccolino?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven eight nine, move the pass the resolution supporting due process and a fair path to citizenship along with regulation of use of village property. Now I have, I have individuals that would like to speak to the issue, if you still like to, you're welcome to come up. Let's see, I don't see any, oh, Gabriella? Oh, let's do a motion, hell. We have a motion.
Give me one second.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we can continue, sorry. Gabriella?
Gabriella.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, you'll have five minutes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gabriella Bañolos. I grew up here, I have lived in Hanover Park for most of my life. This is my home, the place where I went to school, where I built friendships, where I worked, and where I am now raising my family. I am also a business owner, and my taxes solidly support this community just like everyone else's. But today, I am standing here because the fear and chaos that immigration and customs enforcement has brought into our neighborhoods is not the Hanover Park I know. It was never like this, not until now, fueled by hateful language and policies that target people based on solely on their color of their skin or where their family came from. As a resident and as a taxpayer, the bare minimum we should expect is respect. Yet our Hispanic and Latin community is being treated like criminals for simply existing. Even I, a US citizen, fear that I could be stopped or detained without reason. That is not freedom, that is not justice. Let's be clear, we have rights, we have the right to remain silent, the right to speak to an attorney, and the right to refuse any search or entry without a warrant signed by a judge. Those rights apply to all people living in this country. Undocumented or not, when those rights are ignored, our Constitution is being ignored. I want to share something personal. My family has been involved in the immigration process since 2014. Eleven years of waiting, paperwork, interviews, stress, and uncertainty. They tell us to do it the right way, and here we are. But eleven years is too long. No family should be stuck in limbo that long. No children should grow up wondering whether their parent will come home tonight. Back in 2014, the process was still painful. Someone I loved was taken from me without a warrant and in front of my children. But it was nowhere near as traumatizing as what we are witnessing today. Now, children in our community are terrified. They talk about the men in green like they are monsters. When children are scared of the people meant to serve the law, that is a sign that the system is broken. This constant fear hurts our schools, our workplaces, our small businesses, and our neighborhoods. It causes trauma that will stay with these families, with these children for the rest of their lives. I know, I have five kids of my own and are still traumatized from 2014. We all want a safe community, but safety does not come from discrimination or intimidation. Safety comes from trust, from dignity, from supporting the people who contribute to Hanover Park every single day. We must push for fairness, we must push for humanity, and we must stand up for every neighbor who calls this community home, regardless of their status. Also, Mayor Rodney Craig has long emphasized his commitment to public safety, yet recent actions taken by this administration appear to contradict the very values he promotes. Members of the community are calling for the bare minimum, transparency, accountability, and genuine respect for the residents he serves. We simply want leadership that listens and acts in the best interests of its people. If Mayor Craig and his staff continue to disregard the needs and voices of the community, the upcoming elections will serve as a reflection of this disconnect. And I ask that we just come together for a community, and the process of, the pathway of citizenship is very exhausting and long. And as a business owner, instead of, instead of me growing as a business owner, it kind of sets us back due to the eleven years that my family has gone through the process. It's thousands of dollars, eleven years later, I am stressed, I am tired. And please, I beg you guys, to help our community, I am not the only one. There's thousands of people that are going through the same thing as me and my family. And I love Hanover Park, I've been living here for twenty-four years, and although times have changed, we need a better pathway to citizenship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Point of order, I'd like to ask this agenda item, I know there are a number of people that are here to address it, is it possible that we could put that up on the screen so that the people can see the wording of this resolution? I, I think it would be helpful to our discussion, is, can, can we do that? Can we put it on, and at some point I'd like to read it so that you can hear all of the points in the resolution. It might help direct some of your comments, and some of your questions might be answered in, in seeing the actual resolution in front of you.
Jed, can you pull the word? Okay.
Thank you.
Working progress.
Okay. Continue.
Should I, should I wait before I call?
No, continue.
Go, go right ahead.
Continue.
Okay, all right. Runyon, Ryan Runyon?
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome back.
Yeah. So I was here at the last meeting when the ordinance was voted on yes. You just informed us that it is unenforceable. I'm hoping that this kind of gives some insight into that and to why it would be unenforceable and false and misleading. We were here last week because one of our own officers was taken. What are we doing giving our opinions? Now, I am not a lawmaker, that is not my expertise, so with the help of Google, an ordinance versus a resolution, a permanent law versus a less formal expression of opinion, we do not need your opinions, we need your action. To piggyback off of what you were just saying about keeping our residents safe, safety equals action, and whether it's enforceable or not, I need every one of you to stand on business and say, you know what, if it's enforceable or not, we're gonna make this a law. If it's something that you're, have concerns with, that maybe it would be applicable or maybe it won't, in the future could cause issues, that's what amendments are for. You can change this if we need to. This is not just a moment, this is time for everyone to stand up, all right? People are hurting, not only just our immigrant community, but those who are, you know, without food stamps now. We have people going hungry. I encourage everyone here, from the board to our residents, to donate to the Hanover Township Food Bank. We need to build our community, and just an opinion, I'm, I'm very interested to see what this resolution is, but why not law? Why not say, no, we're going to stand up for this because just an opinion is not enough? That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Next is Heather Heskin?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good day.
Heather Heskin, I made it up here, hot mess. Okay, so I've, I've lived in Hanover Park for like twenty-six years or so, and the last seven years I've been, I, I live on Pine Tree Street, and that is right, right next to the apartments behind Dino's. And I have to tell you that, so I'm a teacher in another school district, and so I'm here for two reasons. Number one, I sit on an elected board for the, for the, the union, and, and when I go to Springfield once a month, we have procedures and everything that we have to follow, and if we make a decision or if we make something, if, if, if we do something, we have to follow our procedures. So I just want to make sure that you're operating with a hundred percent transparency because if you agree to something and then maybe don't, if we lose that piece of our transparency, then we are no better than the people who are completely disregarding our democracy right now. So we have procedures and you have to follow them. So if you, if you vote on something, if you vote that you're gonna, you know, bring two things, I mean, I would like to see an ordinance because, again, I, I agree with the other speaker, this is not about opinions, this has to be about action because, that brings me to the second part, when I, when I'm on my, I just got a text now from, from our neighbors because I'm, my husband and I, we're, we're the white people on the street. So I have privilege, which is disgusting, but it's true. So that means that I can go on my street and I can go up to this guy's, who would have thought that I would have walked up to a complete stranger's vehicle that's blacked out and been like, hi, I live right here, are you lost? Do you need something? Because you see that lady over there, she's worried right now. And so then, you know, he rolls down his window and he's like, oh, I'm just waiting for my cousin. I'm like, oh, you are? And then I'm like, hey lady, don't worry, he's just waiting for his cousin. And then he drives off. This is in our neighborhoods, so we need something that feels a little bit more like action. I have never been so worried, and I am a white lady in my neighborhood, like it's, I, I have privilege, nobody's gonna pull me over, but my neighbors will be. I have a... I have a student who just, I just lost, and he's not coming back. And I'm devastated by this. So, just please try not to... Please follow procedures and...
Don't back down.
Thank you. Don't back down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Jenny Golden?
Hi. My name is Jenny. I work my second job here in Hanover Park. And through that job, I've been honored to develop rapport with the Hispanic-Latino community, their culture, their customs, their tradition, and how they value this community, but community within themselves as well. I wake up early to ensure the safety of my neighbors. This is so hard for me to talk about, but as Heather was saying, I'm a white woman and I have privilege. And yes, I have to leave my children at home, but I get to wake up in the morning without fear that ICE is going to harm me. And I protect the community. And then I go work as a nurse. And then I go home and feed my kids. And then I'm back out in the community making sure that our neighbors are safe. And it shouldn't be this way. And I don't know about you guys, but I am tired of seeing abandoned bikes, abandoned cars, abandoned family members. When you Google what it's like to live in Hanover Park, they talk about affordable housing, but the second thing is a sense of community. And I'm asking for transparency from y'all to give us and them that respect. I was barricaded by ICE. I had ten ICE agents knocking and trying to break my window with weapons drawn. And I'm a white woman, and they let me go. But they're not letting our Hispanic-Latino neighbors go. And they're kidnapping them, abducting them, and it is brutal. And I don't know if you are seeing what is happening out there, but it is brutal and it is awful. And if they are doing this to me as a white woman, imagine a million times worse what they are doing to our Hispanic-Latino neighbors. So, I ask for transparency, and I ask for reconsideration of a possible ordinance because resolutions are mere suggestions, and ICE doesn't care about a suggestion. They're breaking laws all the time. And if we can hold them accountable by possibly passing an ordinance, because if I did an eighth of the thing that ICE does, I'd be arrested. I'd be fined. I'd be imprisoned. Why aren't we doing that to them? Why can't we word it? Why can't we word an ordinance that could accommodate our neighbors? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate everyone that spoke. We feel your emotion. I was one of the first mayors who spoke up to know your rights at a local church. First one, others are following in our leadership role. That has gone wide and broad. Ordinances are not developed on emotion. They're not developed in our code book for emotional action. Our resolution is pretty clear about the action that we should be taking.
No, it's not.
So...
No, it's not.
Can I add something?
So, please, let's please allow the rest of the residents continue.
Can we add something about transparency?
So, with that, I will have board members speak to the issue.
And I think the other audience members.
Are there other audience members that would like to speak?
Well, they didn't sign up.
That's great. Yeah, please, come on. Thank you.
They came in late.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Gutierrez. Oh, I could sign in. Don't worry.
Okay.
So, my name is Jacqueline Gutierrez. I am a homeowner here in Hanover Park. I pay taxes every year, and I believe that I have a voice, even though I'm Hispanic and I'm being profiled and I'm being followed by agents because I'm trying to stop what they're doing, which is, it's not, they don't have a warrant. We're not the worst of the worst. We are not. You are here for us, okay? We voted for you, so you owe us loyalty. Not because I'm Hispanic and because you're white, because that's how I feel, because you're not being targeted. And that's how I feel. I'm so sorry, but I see this every day. I have two babies. I have to be taking them. I have a baby with autism. And I have to be coming in the community at six in the morning to see that they don't take my neighbor, that they don't take a family member of mine. I have a business in Rolling Meadows. I'm everywhere. I'm protesting. I'm trying the hardest that I can. And for you just to say no, I don't think that's fair. Because I know that you could do it. If other villages have done it, you could do it. You have the power to do it. And I don't think this is right because this is not we, the people of the United States. This is a country of immigrants. And if anybody thinks that they have more power or, you know, they earn it more, the Native Americans are here, this is a stolen land. Okay, so I'm so sorry if that bothers you, but that's what I feel. And I believe I have a voice because I pay my taxes. I try to work hard. And we are not the worst of the worst. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Commissioner Ada Corral Zapulveda, former village clerk for Hanover Park.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Commissioner.
You know, I came in the last meeting, and I'm glad to see that there is a resolution. I am confused as to why there isn't any information on an ordinance other than what has been stated by the mayor. I think it's important that when, as I recall, when the board takes an action and there is a motion, a second, and there's discussion and a roll call, and all of the board members are in agreements, it's incumbent upon staff to follow that directive. It's not clear as to whether our village attorney has evaluated the merit of an ordinance and provided a legal written opinion. I hear opinions of different things that different agencies are doing, and it's true. We have some communities that are doing resolutions, some communities that are doing ordinances. We have Cook County that has done an ordinance. We have not seen ICE stage on Cook County property. We've seen recently Carpenter'sville that has passed an ordinance. Now, if we have different municipalities doing different things, I understand that that adds to the confusion. So, let me be very clear. I don't think anyone is asking for our police department to break any federal laws and interfere with ICE or federal agent law enforcement. If ICE agents have, or Customs Border Patrol has a warrant, then they can do their work. That's not what an ordinance is proposing. So, it's important that there's a thorough review and that there's a legal review so that it's not based on what different people are saying and doing, but that there's actually a legal review by our village attorney that our chief of police can be a part of. And I don't see what would present that discussion for today's agenda item. You're only getting a resolution. The resolution itself is also not very specific. It's ambiguous in saying, oh, you know, like, they're not prohibited in certain or in specific, and forgive me, I don't remember the exact language. Well, is it, what areas are they and what areas are they not allowed? The community needs to know because I need to know where I can have my kids be around because I don't want them getting tear gassed. I don't want our community members to fear that they can't go to parks, that they can't go to church. Now, I'll say this. When I was here, there was a strong resistance several years back in 2016 to move forward with a simple know your rights workshop. That is something that trustee Shajahan and I pushed forward. And it took years of pushing forward. And finally, after the Trust Act, then some of those recommendations came to be, and I think the trustees that voted in favor of that. But we cannot afford to be behind the times, not this time. You can't just say that you support know your rights now when you should have done it years ago. You can't just be behind the eight ball all the time, Rod. People are really suffering and dying, and our business owners are suffering. You just read a small business, a small Saturday business. All of our small businesses that are the backbones of our community, they're not seeing their workers show up because everyone's scared, citizens and non-citizens, because they're coming after us no matter what. My husband walks around with his passport. That's not the community that we want to have. And what we are asking as a community is that you do your due diligence. If after doing your due diligence, it comes out that, you know what? We can have an ordinance, but the best we can do is give them a frickin' ticket? Okay, I'm not asking for Chief Andy Johnson to get into a gun show with ICE. But I do think that we need to do our due diligence as we consider what actually has some action that people know what it means and what they can do and have some guidance. And this resolution is fluff.
Sarah? Can you just say your last name for me?
That's Franklin Sirby.
Thank you.
Hi, so I am actually here on behalf of some friends of mine here in Hanover Park. I'm a resident of DuPage County, however, and I have heard... I'm actually on the group chat that was mentioned earlier. And these people are scared. And there was some rather dismissive language earlier about making decisions based on emotion, as if that was the basis of what is happening today. Businesses are suffering. I've spoken to restaurant owners who say, this is like COVID. Can we all like reflect back on that and remember what it was like in 2020? And people are gone. People are gone. So, that's, if you can't think of them as people, perhaps we could think of them as business owners, workers, taxpayers, you know, participants in the local culture and community. And some, honestly, are dead. So, this is the reality. This is the facts. It's not an emotion. You can put your emotions onto the facts later. But the reality is ICE is not following laws. They're breaking lots of, plenty of local and state laws, driving like complete lunatics, not having proper registration on their vehicles, pulling over and restraining... Well, actually, they're not even supposed to do traffic stops, and yet they're allowed to continue pulling people over, not just here. This isn't a Hanover Park-only problem, but lots of places. And there have been reports even just today about citizens being detained and asked after they're already in the vehicle, oh, what's, are you a citizen? They don't care. And there has to be something done because we cannot just continue to let things play out in the system how they normally do and hope that this will all get back to normal in like 2028. Where will the community be? The community will be traumatized, what's left of it. It's not acceptable. And just to get back on that transparency bandwagon, it's in the meeting. And to dismiss everyone and say, this is actually, you know what, don't worry about it. We're not going to make decisions based on emotion. I have to echo what was just said. You know what? Play it out. Put out the drafts. Let people see it. Say, hey, this part, you know what, that you really wanted, maybe we can enforce that. Why not let the people comment on it? This could be done. And it's really shady to just say, we can't do it. Don't worry about it. Thank you.
Mayor, is it okay if I jump in now?
That's all the, anybody else who wants to speak, you can sign in. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank people for showing up tonight. I'm one of the junior trustees. I'm new to this. Forty years prior to this, I was a soldier. I actually committed to serve because of that piece of paper. I didn't go to the Army because of the college fund. I didn't go to the Army because I'd exhausted every other opportunity in my life and had no place else to go. I went to the Army specifically to defend the Constitution. And I went to several wars. Most of them I can even talk about. So many wars that sometimes I can't remember things that happened in some of the wars that I went to because I got blown up and stuff, and that can, getting your belt wrong can affect your memory. But I very much empathize with everyone in the situation that we're in today. When I first got to this dais, I went home and would watch myself on YouTube because for the time that I served, I wouldn't let people take pictures of me. I was the kind of soldier that needed to be surreptitious in a lot of their actions, so I couldn't have any photos on the internet. So, to see myself on YouTube for a whole hour doing this and then have conversations back and forth where we talk about issues was interesting to me. On YouTube, it tells you how many people have viewed the video. When I first started doing this more than a year ago, those numbers were less than 10. Only three or four people would watch the video, and I was one of them. Everything that you've said here tonight will be part of a YouTube video forever. Feel free to watch yourself say the words that you said tonight. As a matter of fact, I almost insist that you go do that because your words, your emotion is not lost on us. There's, to my eye, not a lack of transparency. We have set your words in video, which is now the same as carving them into stone because they'll be part of the internet forever. You will notice, however, if you go past through the last years' worth of videos, that a lot of the words that you guys have said tonight with much of the same emotion and put together and assembled in much the same order that you have said them, people on this dais have said all over the last year. You will notice that I very personally have taken a front and am not comfortable with the actions at the state and federal level, that I have talked endlessly about my oath of office and being committed to the Constitution, life or death. So, I very much feel your emotion. The people on this board very much feel your emotion. However, having said that, we have to operate within our lane. We, like someone has mentioned earlier, have to refer to our council and let our council tell us in black and white what's possible. We want to do what's right in right and wrong. But being in the positions that we're in, we still have to do what is right in black and white, even when that somewhat limits what we would want to do in right and wrong. There's a video in my head that plays me going out and defending people specifically in this country with the knowledge that I gained as an airborne ranger infantry officer over the several wars that I went to. However, I'm not under an oath of office as an airborne ranger infantry officer anymore. I'm a trustee for Hanover Park. I take very seriously looking out for the residents of Hanover Park. When one of my neighbors in my cul-de-sac had a tree with some rot that had to get pulled down, they were very upset about it. I made sure that they came in and spoke before the board so that they could share their emotion about that. The things that you guys are talking about are so many orders of magnitude against a tree getting pulled down in the parkway that I'm not sure I can even get close to empathizing with you completely about what you're up against. My wife's a teacher. She was an early childhood educator prior to being middle school English teacher like she is now. I can't imagine, like the video I saw today of agents going into a daycare and pulling out an early childhood educator, what it would have been like if I had been in my wife's early childhood education setting when masked officers who were not identified as any sort of agency came in. There would have been the potential for a really bad outcome. So, I can't specifically identify one for one, but I can feel parts of what you're experiencing. And as far as transparency, we're making a record of this. You will be part of that record. I applaud you for coming in and saying those words. But understand that there's risk involved in everything that we're doing here today. You have publicly identified yourself here on this record as we have, meeting after meeting after meeting. as we have, meeting after meeting after meeting, talking about how the state is outside the bounds of the Constitution for the state of Illinois. Talking about how the federal government is outside the bounds of the federal Constitution. I personally wrote a letter to the mayor a few weeks ago where I found 24 different ways that the federal government is outside the Constitution by simply taking a copy of the Constitution and looking at current events and going line by line and founding, and found 24 different ways that the federal government is behaving unconstitutionally. Also understand this. Doing something unconstitutional is not, in and of itself, against the law. Elected bodies, legislators, they make laws. The Constitution is the law of the land. They use the Constitution to guide the legislators into making those laws. That's the black and white. The Constitution is what we want in right and wrong. But like I said earlier, what we want to be and to act and to have happen in right and wrong doesn't always align with what is in black and white. For our part, we've had conversations endlessly about every point of what it is that you're talking about. We've had conversations endlessly about what, every point that you are feeling. And for a lot of us, we feel very much of everything that you're feeling. Maybe not as much and as close and as, from a small degree of separation. It's not within my family personally, but it's certainly my neighbor. It's certainly other neighbors that I don't know personally, but are in my community. We want to do what we can. But we're also limited by only operating within the black and white. So yes, an ordinance would be a stronger statement on our part, which is what you want and what I believe you deserve. However, if any of you have ever raised kids, you don't want to make a law in your house that you can't enforce. Because it undermines your own credibility. It undermines your ability to function as the law in that, under that roof. The same thing here in the community. If we put an ordinance that we can't enforce, it undermines our own ability to function and to be credible. And like someone said earlier, we don't want to put our law enforcement in the position of having to have a gunfight with federal agents. And, and to, and understand, from my experience, the federal agents that I observed, they're not very good at weapons, not just maintenance, but function, loading, unloading. And that's part of what we put in the resolution, is safe actions. When they were loading and unloading, I watched them negligent discharge weapon. In my part of the Army, if someone had done that, they would immediately be removed from the unit. That is such a monumental failure of skill level one task, they would be gone. So we agree with you in virtually every aspect of what you're saying. But we're also limited to only doing what we can actually do at this level. There is such a thing as federal supremacy. We have to acknowledge that in black and white, there is federal supremacy. You will notice that there was an election this week, not in our area, but in many other states of the Union. And it went very much against a lot of the things that have been going on most recently in the media. I think that's almost a bigger problem. Because that's going to make the federal authorities act even more hyperbolically. They will have to hold on to what they've got existentially. So this is only the very beginning. And as a last note, I'd like to hit a piece of history, which I often do. The piece of history I'd like to highlight is from 1789 France. The French at that time, a regime that had been around 800 years, which is a pretty long time for a single form of government. The whole world focused on the culture of France at the time. They were the center of everyone's focus. And then things got hard. Not just politically, but there was a shortage of food. Maybe some of this sounds familiar. That shortage of food ended up in a cliche that people often use here to this day, where the queen, Marie Antoinette, at the time, said, if people don't have bread, let them eat cake. And that was a cliche that was to identify how far removed people at echelons above reality were from regular folk. That followed was a revolution. And in that revolution, that queen got her head taken off by a device called a guillotine. The person that actually said those words about letting them eat something besides the bread, he said brioche, that guy faced a guillotine too. So I would caution you against rebellion. I would caution you against revolution. I would caution you against speaking out above your level and outside the lines of black and white. Because that revolution went wild. And 40,000 people faced the guillotine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go next.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank our residents for, for coming and attending our meeting. I'm always grateful to see our residents. I'm always so grateful to hear from them, learn more about their lived experiences. Because I think when, when we hear from you guys, it makes us better trustees. So, so thank you so much.
Two, several weeks ago, on October 16th, I made a motion. And that motion stated that we were requesting, as a board, to have a resolution and an ordinance for review that prohibited ICE activity on village-owned property. I made that motion. Then that motion was seconded by trustee Gutierrez, also seconded by trustee Alba. And then, one by one, we voted in the affirmative to move forward with that action. Fast forward to today, we only have a resolution in front of us. And when I asked for clarity as to why we only had a resolution on our, in our board packet, I was told that the mayor and staff had decided that we were only going to have a resolution.
Okay, let me stop you.
I am not finished. You are not going to stop me because I am not finished.
You asked for a immediate response.
I am not finished. You will not stop me.
Well, you are.
You had no right. No right. I am not misinformed. You had, we, we are a duly elected board. If we vote on something and we all vote in the affirmative that, that something's going to happen, then that something needs to happen. You don't get to pick and choose what happens in that motion. You have no, I'm not finished. You have no right. And you know what? No one here has that right. Because that's the beauty of a duly elected board. That's the beauty of a democracy. So I understand that you spoke to DuPage County. You spoke to the state's attorney. I don't know what that has to do with the motion that we made here, seconded, and then moved forward with. We should have had a resolution and an ordinance in front of us to review. I cannot believe you had, you have the audacity to say that this action was taken in, in emotion. Our community is suffering.
These are facts.
These are, these are facts. We have, we all have eyes. We all see what's going on, okay? The audacity to say that this is non-factional when we all, you're, you're insulting all of us, really. Because we all voted for this. I mean, to say that signage is misleading? We were so clear on October 16th about what we wanted to see in the resolution and the ordinance that we were going to review. We even, I even read specific things. Prohibited any village-owned or controlled parking lot, vacant lots. I mean, I read directing staff to identify properties, make signage. We were so specific about what we wanted to see. None of that is in the resolution. Fluff.
You want me to be silent?
No, I'm not finished.
Well, you're finished with me.
So our community is saying that we should be doing the bare minimum. I agree. We should be doing the bare minimum. Our community is saying that there's trauma, that safety comes from supporting our residents. That's what we should be doing. Every single day. And then someone even clarified the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. And that's all that we were asking for, just to compare and contrast. Because as it was already stated, some municipalities are doing resolutions, some are doing ordinances. We just want to be informed. We want to, we want to make fully informed decisions and make that decisions on behalf of our residents who are scared. I mean, this is, you know, someone said it's shady. I agree. This is shady. Super shady. That a couple of people made the decision to ignore what we voted on. It's disrespectful. Now you can respond.
I'd be happy to. When I reviewed the electronic copies, it was and/or a resolution.
That is not true.
And I went back and we typed that up. And sure enough, it's there. Trustee Gutierrez said, resolution, resolution, resolution. I listened to that. And I responded to that. And I did my due diligence by reaching out to the number of people that I did. And I reached out in an effective and efficient manner to come to this board with what is appropriate in a resolution. An ordinance, nobody wants to hear this, but an ordinance is more specific, not about emotion, not about the, what's happening here. It's about the codifying what the future of this village is. The resolution clearly provides direction within the parameters that are expected of us within the laws of the state and the federal government's out of control. I think we all agree with that. But don't tell me when I'm told that it's resolution or an ordinance, that that's the way it came up. And I listened to it.
Oh, it's not true.
And I dealt with those appropriate individuals who I thought really had the, had a handle on all this. And that was the, the leader of DuPage County. And she advised her, her board, if you really want to understand the best way, best approach on this, go talk to Mayor Craig. Because I did the due diligence with DuPage County and the state's attorney advised us all that any kind of signage is dangerous because it's misinformation. People believe it's a safe zone. And I've had my say.
Mayor, may I speak?
So?
May I speak? Okay. So I didn't, I didn't go back and read that. But I understood that we were going to look at an ordinance versus a resolution today. So I'm told that I always speak very slow. I'm trying to speak loudly. And I am tired. I am exhausted. I am so tired. So are we. If you don't know what I do for a living. My name's Lisa Gutierrez. And I'm married to an immigrant family. I have lost members of my family to deportation and can very much lose someone that's very close to them. I have a process concern with this board. This is not the first time that we've asked for something and something else is brought to us. Or something is omitted. That happens often. Something is omitted. And the board was not consultant, consulted in deciding whether we should have a resolution or an ordinance and which one's more appropriate for this matter. And I understand, Mayor, you acted. I understand how much you deeply love this town and how worried you are and how you want to, want to do something. But determining to move forward with a resolution is and must remain, or an ordinance, has to remain the duty of the board and the decision of the board, not the decision of a single elected official or the staff. I want to accept whether it be a resolution or an ordinance. I want to accept it, not because you discussed this with a person at DuPage County that leans more to one side of the political spectrum than the other, but rather because we talked through with an expert, all of us. My question remains the same, and this has not answered it. How is this enforced? Is it barriers in place? Is it simply asking them to leave? Is it asking them to show a warrant? What are the pros and cons? Does this create viability? How are other municipalities handling it? Is this merely symbolic or does it have a practical effect? What are the other ones doing that they got their counsel to agree to an ordinance? I've been observing other municipalities. And what I do for a living, I'm a director of immigrant programs at a nonprofit. I'm accredited representative of the Department of Justice to practice immigration law. So when I hear you speak, I hear this all day long. What I've observed in other towns is that these resolutions and these ordinances look alike. They look very much alike. The question is enforceability. How are we going to enforce it? Is it simply a barrier, as Evanston has decided, and letting the, the village manager decide what that looks like? It certainly does not pit our police department against them, nor does it stop them from enforcing the law when they have a warrant. The ideal solution would be, of course, for the township or the state to come through and cover us, right? Because we're the smaller towns. But this isn't going to happen anytime soon. Mayor, you stated that we don't act out of emotion. And you're right. We act out of a duty to safety and the future of Hanover Park. Because our businesses are suffering. Our families are being destroyed. Children are not going to school. I cannot tell you how many short-term guardianship appointments I make a day. I had a surgery for carpal tunnel. Did you know it can come back? That's how much I do a day, okay? It's about our future. So the signage, man, it's powerful. It sends a clear message of solidarity with our residents, regardless of what their immigration journey is. And perhaps the enforcement is simply barricades and accountability, which is something that a resolution doesn't do. But it's left to, up to us to discuss. It isn't, the decision is not made for us. Now, I want us to be very realistic. And if you, you hear a lot of passionate speaking, listen to this carefully. Neither a resolution or an ordinance will guarantee that immigration enforcement will stop. Okay? They serve simply as symbolic statements of our value as America's village. We have to ensure that nobody develops a false sense of security that our properties are misconstrued as sanctuary locations because that is not what they are. Okay? I'm not going to take a break. I'm going to keep talking. These are not sanctuary locations, okay? This could, this could create a very dangerous situation.
I have the chair. Go ahead.
Thank you. This could create a very dangerous situation for people if they think, you know, they're running away from immigration enforcement. And I don't want that. I never want anybody to think that our parking lot is safe for them to hide. But the White House Deputy Chief of Staff has made it very clear the federal agents will continue arresting and kidnappings, and they are immune from prosecution. So we have to do something. So what are our possible remedies? How do we respond if ICE operates on village property? I say, we say no. We put up the signs. We say, no, you're not allowed to do this. That's a civil matter. That's not what this parking lot is for. I believe we need more than just an ordinance, though. Neither will, will these ordinance or resolutions halt this enforcement? Residents with U.S. applications, I have to tell you, in my job, every day, residents with U.S. applications of withholding of deportation and asylum. That application means you cannot be deported, is accepted and stamped by USCIS or EOIR. They're still, even though they've been stamped and received, they're still being kidnapped and removed. And we can't find them. It's so difficult to find them. Sometimes we don't know who they are. We have to yell out, what's your name? What's your name? Tell us your name. Okay? So what can we do? What considerations do we have other than just being symbolic and having those signs? Many municipalities are looking at this. When ICE enforcement is working, we are told, go ahead, call 911 if you don't know who that is. Call 911. And our officers will verify, yep, that's ICE enforcement. It happened to me in Hoffman Estate. A police officer came out. Yes, that's ICE enforcement, okay? They could do a little bit more without intervening, without disrupting what they call justice, right? Immigration enforcement has very clearly become a public concern. And I've sent you, the board, I've sent you the reading that the FBI has warned that individuals impersonating ICE officers have committed serious crimes. And that the FBI has requested that people start wearing badges and identifying themselves. So I'm saying, go beyond this ordinance. I'm saying, when officers are called to verify ICE activity, if they're called to verify ICE, ICE activity, I would like for our officers to document name and badge numbers. I don't want you to interfere. I just want to know who that, who that officer is that kidnapped that person and who that person is. Because they will be calling you to find out if that person was kidnapped. Because that's what we're telling people. Call 911 and report them missing. This is not in opposition to ICE, but a step forward towards transparency and This is not in opposition to ICE but a step forward towards transparency and safety and ensures we have accurate data if this person is missing later. So for me, finally, I say that we need either a special meeting or workshop to discuss the enforceability of a resolution versus an ordinance done as a team here. And that I will like to include this as part of our welcoming ordinance. We already have it, so we could just add this to it. That when ICE enforcement is seen and if and when our officers are called, that our officers document who is being taken and who the officer is. Adieu.
Wait, make it a motion.
I'm sorry?
A motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we either hold a special meeting or a workshop to discuss differences between a resolution and an ordinance, the enforceability of these, and that we look at how our officers can document information on those who are being rescued.
Second.
Second.
Discussion before we, we take the vote, I'd like to weigh in on this, on this subject. The minutes from the previous meeting do indicate that there was a motion and a second to formalize an ordinance and/or a resolution that would provide regulation. However, I think the, the will of the board was, was very specific and it's, I think that's an unfortunate wording of, of the, what actually transpired where it says and/or. I really think the will of the board was that we would have the two to make a comparison, that there would be an ordinance and that there would be a resolution. And I think the audience members that were here, you also walked away with that understanding and it's clear from your comments that that was your understanding. And it's unfortunate that it was worded, and I'm looking at the official minutes, and it's unfortunate that it was worded in the, in the minutes and/or, which.
But I was very clear.
I'm, I'm just saying, it's, no, I'm not, no, it's unfortunate, but I'm very, you were very clear. And that's what I'm saying, it's very clear that we wanted an ordinance and a resolution. And so for that, now we find ourselves here with just a resolution. And my thoughts on the resolution is that the resolution is very weak in, in the way that it's been worded. There are some mentions in the resolution that talk about things like the failure of Congress, which has nothing to do with the discussions that we're having here today. And where it shifts some of the blame for, for the situation that we find ourselves in based on an act of or a lack of action by, by Congress. We're here in very troubled and unusual times. And I think it's, it's time for, and it's, it's a period where we have to take some unusual actions. I agree that under normal circumstances that we probably would defer from an ordinance, but we're not in normal times.
That's right.
I see what's going on in our town and in towns around the state, especially as Illinois has been targeted because of the stance of, of our governor who has been very, very actively against the actions of Border Patrol and ICE agents. And, and so I think that, you know, that has increased the activity and the, the sort of vengeance that's been waged on, on our residents in our community. I think that whereas an ordinance does have to have some measure of enforceability in normal times, but I think it can also send a signal. It can send a message to, to ICE, to Border Patrol, that in Hanover Park, here's what we stand for. You can't use our parking lots for staging. You can't use our, our village-owned properties. You can't use those for your activities. You, you can't do that. Now, we can enforce those. We can make sure that when we see them trespassing on certain properties, then we can ask them to leave. I think that our ordinance can also make demands that in, in light of Trustee Gutierrez' recognition and mention of the memo that went out from the FBI that said that they're imposters, imposing as federal agents, imposing as ICE agents and Border Patrol agents, that they're out there doing all type of criminal activities. I think that what that does is that that's a, a message, maybe a subliminal message to our law enforcement that maybe we do need to ask for identification. Maybe we do need to say, drop the mask, identify yourselves. And to do that, because we don't know if we're dealing with lawful agents or if we're dealing with impersonators and criminals who have gone on Amazon and bought uniforms and, and badges and, you know, have, have bought vests. You know, all of these items are easily purchased and available on Amazon. So we don't know who's in the streets. We know that the ICE agents and the Border Patrol agents are illegally changing the license plates.
That's right.
So they can't be tracked. And so they're out and once the, once the community finds out that they're using a certain vehicle, then they illegally change the, the license plates, which our Secretary of State has said is against the law. And they're breaking the law when they do that. So when we have this kind of unlawfulness coming from our federal agencies and to my colleague Albuck, Trustee Albuck, who said that they're acting illegally and acting against the Constitution, I think desperate times call for desperate measures. And we certainly are in an era of desperate times because people's families are being torn apart. Our community is being ripped apart. I, I cannot imagine the anguish of my grandson, who's a seven-year-old in school, coming home one day to find that his mom and dad have been deported and he's left alone and doesn't know, you know, what his future is going to look like because his parents have been ripped away. That is unimaginable to me, to think about that horror and the desperation. No child should have to do that. No family should have to undergo that. When you have citizens that have been here, to one of our speakers who said her family's been going through the process for 11 years, for 11 years, and yet they still live in daily fear that their rights and their citizenship and their, their homes and their livelihoods could be ripped away from them at any moment. And they're trying to do things the right way. And we have many of the people who are being deported, who are being taken away, who've been disappeared, are trying to do things the right way. They're trying to do things the right way. And I am all for rule of law and, and order and, and for what makes sense. But again, I think the times that we're, we're facing, I never imagined that we would have this. I lived through the civil rights movement. I lived through the protest movements. I lived through the sit-ins. I lived through all of that. And I'm telling you that this, as horrible as they were, we didn't worry about being sent back to Africa. Someone picking us up, putting us on ships and deporting us. That was not one of our concerns. Now, we were being jailed and, and abused and all of that. But just the thought that someone could decide that you're not worthy to walk on this land, to live in this land, that because of the color of your skin or the number of vowels in your name or, or your surname, that you are not worthy to, to be in our country and to have access to all of the liberties of the United States of America. It's unconscionable that we've come to this point. We had a police officer here in Hanover Park that was detained and disappeared and, and is now in a retention center, detention center. And I have not heard any updates on his whereabouts or what's happened. I thought we would get that update tonight at this meeting. We've come down this far and there have been no updates and there have been no reports about what's happened with our police officer. I know he had some hearings that were scheduled to be held this week and, and we don't have that information. So things are really in turmoil. Things are really in turmoil. I support, to make, to finish this, I support that we go back to the original intent, regardless of what the motion reads, that we go back to the original intent of that evening and, and present an ordinance and a resolution. And I would like to see the resolution revised and, and made to have more teeth in the resolution. If we're not going to have a, an ordinance, I'd like to see a resolution that at least has, has some type of authority within the resolution. Because the one that we have now, it's a lot of suggestions and, and it's very innocuous in, in, in what it can do. It's, it's not, it's not firm enough. I'd like to see a very firm resolution, but I'd also like to see that ordinance. So I, I, I think that the motion that's on the floor to have the, the workshop to review the, the motion, I mean, to review the ordinance and the resolution, I, I confirm and I stand behind, I support that.
If I may. The, my approach on this whole thing was rather technical based on the history of how we've pulled together resolutions and ordinances. And these are exceptional times. And, you know, I did what I believe my due diligence on pulling this together. I thought I had some good consultation. I used the state reps, I used the state senator, I used DuPage County. And, you know, when I listened to the tape and it was clear, you know, and/or, I think there was more stronger emphasis as I'm hearing. But if you want to have a special session, I'm in favor of that, okay? I'm not opposed to the things that are said. I understand the mo, I've lived in this town a long time. I understand the emotion that's being articulated by those in this room. We have worked with all of you in one way or another over time. But you have to understand, when I look at the technical values of an ordinance and the technical values of a resolution, you know, I just fell back on that tradition. So not to insult anybody by saying it's, you know, the ordinance is out of order. I'm all in favor of let us all work together on a solution if it includes an ordinance. You know, I, I hate to put things in ordinance that are not enforceable. So when we do come together, we've got to have the experts come in and advise us one way or the other. I used the state attorney. I used the sheriff of DuPage County. I use our.
So, so let's figure out the timeline of that.
I have experts.
So we have a motion and a second on that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is there any additional discussion as we move ahead?
Yeah, so I agree with Trustee Albuck. Let's have a timeline, given the urgency surrounding this matter. I understand that there is a difference between a special meeting and a workshop. I would prefer. Okay, thank you. Then I'd like to have this special meeting within the next week.
Man your calendar.
And away we go.
Okay. And I'd also, I have a couple additional comments. I know that many of us have spoken tonight, so I, I hope we have made it abundantly clear that all of us have a voice on this board, right? And that, you know, if we move forward with something and that we vote on it, that it happens in that way. I, I hope we've made that very clear. I also would like to make a motion that we have some sort of rule on the book that states that if a trustee makes a motion on a particular matter and that, and moving, and when that ordinance or resolution is drafted, that that, that trustee is present. No more writing something, going in the back, doing it, no more of that. So a trustee needs to be present. If they're making the motion, then they need to be present while it's being drafted. So we cut out all of this confusion. We don't know what was said in the meeting, the minutes. No, the person that made it can be there. So I make that motion.
Well, we already have a motion and I listened to the minutes and we have an and/or situation, so that's.
Okay. Then I'll wait for the first motion to be voted on and then I'll make my motion.
So what do we have before us? A special meeting within a week?
Yes. The trustee quarter left, so I'd like to wait until he returns.
Okay, so while he, while he wait.
Let's take a five-minute break so we can look at our calendars.
Um.
Just pick a date maybe?
Pardon?
Pick a date?
Well, I'm looking at my calendar now.
Next Thursday. Everybody go. Go do your calendar, next Thursday.
Thursday, the 13th of November.
At 8:00 a.m. I could do like an 8:00 a.m. I can't, I can't do.
You're killing me. You're killing me.
Or 9:00 a.m.
Evening.
I can't do.
Monday.
Thursday morning.
Can't do it.
How about Monday to 10:00? Evening.
I'm speaking, I know you're right, so that's.
That's a good one.
Yeah. No. Can we do a morning one on Monday?
I won't be there.
Just need a forum.
Yeah, we do need a forum. So Monday morning.
That doesn't work for me. It would have to be at 10:30.
Wednesday evening.
No.
Veteran's Day, we ought to have stuff.
Wednesday, I could do 7:00.
Wednesday, 7:00 p.m.
No, I can't do 9:00. You said, Mayor, you said Monday, 10:30?
Yeah.
I can do that.
What about others?
Monday, 10:30.
The 10?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does that work?
I don't know.
Monday, 10:30?
Trustee Cunkel, does that work?
No, it don't work for me.
No. Quarter, or Albuck, is he asked Gutierrez?
I have a can, so.
No.
Okay, so Monday, 10:30 is out. Do we have a forum?
We can't do Thursday morning?
I can, I can do Thursday morning.
Yeah, Thursday morning.
Thursday morning. I have Metro Board meetings downtown.
Yes, me, Trustee Ben Colley, is there an evening that you can do it?
Friday.
This Friday?
14.
Like tomorrow?
No, tomorrow, the next Friday.
The 14?
The 14 works.
The 14 works in the evening for me.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do Friday, the 14th at the, in the evening.
Four, at 4:00?
We open house at Central of the information room at 9:00.
What? Can we do 4:00 on the 14?
Yeah. Let's, yeah.
4:00 on when?
4:00 on 14. Yep.
Okay. I got it.
Okay. November 14th.
Is that a go for everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
John?
Cunkel?
Yep, we're.
Okay, thank you. On November 14th at 4:00 p.m.
November 14th at 4:00, thank you.
Technically, it's outside your, your motion.
Within a week in the day.
So why should somebody make a motion to amend the previous motion? I believe the, within one week. And setting the date, yes, Friday, 14th of November.
I amend the previous motion to. I, I make a motion to amend the previous motion that the special meeting to discuss the resolution and ordinance prohibiting ICE operations on village-owned properties take place on Friday, November 14th at 4:00 p.m.
Well, I don't think that they have other purpose in it about, about property and all of this stuff. They're holding a special meeting for the purpose of discussing this issue on Friday.
That wasn't her first, that was in her first motion.
It wasn't.
Trustee Gutierrez?
What?
No, that's.
Okay. I amend, I make a motion to amend the previous motion to hold a special meeting discussing the ordinance and resolution on November, Friday, November 14th at 4:00 p.m.
So. Second, I second.
Okay, there was some discussion about what's an ordinance and what's a.
No, 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 we're going to talk about that later.
Well, I want to know what they want on the agenda. Yeah, they want both. Are we going to invite?
Yes, on the agenda, we would like to see a resolution that has more teeth. Yes, on the agenda, we would like to see a resolution that has more teeth, I don't know how else to say that. I'd also like to see an ordinance, there are models out there for Carpenter'sville, Evanston, there's so many. I also believe that I can invite someone that can help us with this ordinance.
I think that we've provided several different examples, right? There's other municipalities that have done this, have passed it, that have had the discussions that have teeth to them. I think we provided actually a couple of those before this was drafted. So again, reiterating, using that language, that strong language, it's been reviewed and placing it into our resolution and ordinance for review for the board. And I just want to be very crystal clear because I want there to be zero confusion. I'm going to read several of the things that I had mentioned before on October 16th on what we wanted to see. So for the record, so there's no confusion about what we are talking about on November 14th at 4:00 PM. Prohibiting any village-owned and controlled parking lots, vacans, vacant lots, or other village-owned property from being used as a staging area, processing location, operations base, or other support for civil immigration enforcement. This includes assembling, mobilizing, and deploying vehicles, equipment, materials, and personnel. Another thing that we could see, directing staff to identify village-owned properties that could be used as enforcement operations, staging locations, and to post signage clearly identifying these properties as village-owned property and stating that they may not be used for immigration enforcement purposes. Directing staff to whenever available and appropriate to use physical barriers such as locked gates to limit access to village-owned properties so that they cannot be accessed for immigration enforcement purposes. Directing staff to design and print signage that private property owners or renters may use to delineate non-public areas of their property in which activities related to civil immigration enforcement are restricted. These signs will be made free of charge to private entities, businesses, medical providers, nonprofits, faith institutions. Our village could make this signage available on our website so that landowners and lease owners could download and print the signs. I want to be very clear about what we are looking for. And again, I will share this information, but this is, this is what we want.
I think we also want to reiterate like we did from that previous meeting, that they, it's not appropriate for them to load or download to load clear weapons in those staging areas.
Oh, yes. Yeah, you should repeat that.
Yeah.
I mean, they negligently discharge weapons in-
Loading weapons.
Parking lot, in our village, those are residential areas all around. Those rounds can travel through multiple structures and hurt multiple people with an errant round when they load and unload weapons in those staging areas. So, we want to add that in, that they're not going to function like that. And actually-
Thank you, trustee Albuck.
Chief, what's our SOP for our police officers in Hanover Park to load and clear weapons prior and after a shift?
We have tubes available for them to place the firearm into the tube if they have to unload a weapon in our garage area.
So they have a clearing barrel?
Yes.
Okay, I'm familiar with that. So, I, you know, I, I don't know if other municipalities are doing that, but if they're going to, you know, stage in our, can we loan them a clearing barrel so that they do negligently discharge because of their lack of training in safe firearms operation? Can we loan them a clearing barrel so that they can load and unload weapons there instead of shooting into the residential areas?
Maybe that can be explored during the, for the meeting.
Yeah.
In preparation for the meeting.
So we'll want to see something about that too, then.
Yeah.
Sure.
Did we get, did we get our officer that has seen out of the concentration camp?
There's a mo- wait a minute, there's a motion on the floor, right?
Yeah.
That we have to, have to vote on?
So, I just want to make it very clear, the things that I have stated, the things that trustee Albuck has stated, the things that trustee Gutierrez has stated, they will be available for the board for review on November 14th at 4:00 PM.
Let's call for the vote.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Cunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Bancole?
Yes.
Trustee Albuck?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a special meeting on the 14th.
You have to vote on the main motion.
Yes.
There was a motion to amend.
That one, yes.
The motion is now-
Ready?
You have to vote on the main motion.
Yeah, we're ready. Great.
Come on in.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Cunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Bancole?
Yes.
Trustee Brockalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albuck?
Yes.
And trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you again to our residents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seven A, 10. Moved approved warrant 11-6-2025 in the amount of $2,750,456.31.
Does your make your motion for present trustees?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing done, trustee call the roll.
Sorry. Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Cunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Bancole?
Yes.
Trustee Brockalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albuck?
Yes.
And trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seven A, 11. Moved to approve warrant paid in advance, 10-10-2025 through 10-30-2025 in the amount of $1,729,472.69.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Ready?
Yep.
Trustee Cunkel?
Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Bancole?
Yes.
Trustee Brockalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albuck?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
And trustee Porter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seven A, 12. Moved to approve September P. cards in the amount of $36,070.13.
So move.
Second.
All righty, trustee Bancole?
Yes.
Trustee Brockalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albuck?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And trustee Cunkel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Field managers report.
So this evening, there are several items under my report. Judd, can you pull up the chart for, we have one item that was not finalized for the budget, so the budget is scheduled to be up for approval this evening, you agreed to post it. So the, for public review, so-
Can you zoom in?
Is, was this emailed to us?
It's in the portal. It was part of the budget.
So you go with email and then-
We just didn't get to it. We just did not get to it. The, at our budget hearing, we ran out of time, so we're finishing up today. We've done this in previous years as well. So, the amount that's included in the budget currently is $35,500 for community contributions. The chart that you see above on the screen shows how much was budgeted and available for those organizations in 2025, the current year, how much was requested this year, applications were sent out to all of these organizations, and then how much is recommended to be budgeted, the breakdown of the $35,500. We did, so I guess this evening, as in previous years, if you've in the past made adjustments from time to time, the only one, there was an additional organization that has not put forth an application in the past. I don't know if somebody suggested they send an application, but that was the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic. They sent in a request, we had not received one in the past.
Okay.
So, any changes? If not, again, the budget just has the total amount, but we would, we need to know how the board wishes to break that down so that we can let those organizations know once the budget's approved that it's available. And then our process, I have more detail. The applications were included in the portal, and if you have any questions about any of the organizations, I can try to answer your questions this evening.
What is youth assistance program?
So, Christie, do you want to talk, speak to that?
Yes, so the youth assistance program is through the clerk's office. Families in Hanover Park that are in financial difficulty can get $75 a year per child in their household. So they participate at Gym Kana, our Park District, other activities here in town, and in the past three years, we really haven't seen a need for it. But this year, we are almost at that 2,000, so I requested to have another 1,000 for next year so that we can accommodate for the entire year for these families.
Was this other, always under the clerk's office?
Yeah, but, yes, and it's always been part of this number as part of the budget.
Thank you, Juliana. The Youth of the Year scholarships, is that the one when we go to channels?
Yes.
Okay.
The annual dinner?
Yes.
Yes, that we recognize individuals.
Could we increase that number? I noticed, you know what, I don't think I want this year because I was, I was sick. But the year before, I noticed our numbers, the amount that we give out is kind of low. I think we give out like $500, and then the first place is 1,000, and I think we should bump that.
Which one?
And take it away from where it is.
The scholarships.
Um. So we have to remove it from somewhere else. Yeah.
Yes, I don't believe we've ever turned anyone away, but-
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like-
That, I think your breakdown is correct, 500 for the runners-up and $1,000 for the winner. Sometimes we've had a tie and we've tried to figure that out.
Okay, yeah, if we, it looks like ARA, American Association of Retired Asians, so they did not, they gave us a request or they did not?
They did not put in an application this year.
Okay, so that might be a possibility to add more to the Youth of the Year. I think we should be at least at 5,000. It's, it's just, it's, everything is increased, the price, you know, for schools, school's expensive, and I just think we're, we're a little bit on the low end. And so, and I think we're doing a great thing, but I, I do think that more should be added to those scholarships.
Do you have a suggestion on where you would, would you have a suggestion on where those, where you would reorder all of those or take from?
Yeah, so, so ARA, they didn't request, but we have 1,000.
Yeah, I think, is this the, I believe this is the Meals on Wheels?
No, this is the second time-
That lunch, isn't that where you can?
No.
Does anybody know? That's not-
No, this is the second year that they don't request. I don't think they requested last year either.
They did not request that. Okay, so maybe we can put that one on, on hold and just-
I, I would move that money to-
Go back. I'd like to make those.
I, I'm, I'm questioning with what we're facing with the reduction in SNAP benefits and, and other benefits to our community, why the Hanover Township Foundation was reduced from, if I'm reading the line, from 2,500 to 2,000. I think there's going to be an increased pressures put on, on the township to fund the food pantry and so forth, and why, why did we decide to decrease their amount from 2,500 to 2,000?
So, so they decreased their request this year. So we awarded what they requested.
When was the request made?
It was prior to maybe the most recent month or so activity and concern. The only other thing we could say is this is for 2026, so you could adjust that budget at a later date or in January if for some reason things continue to get worse.
I must certainly be, I think we should take that under consideration.
Yeah.
Because it was probably made before the shutdown and, and the different things, of course, that are, that are going to be happening. And they didn't foresee this, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess I'm saying it may be, it may correct itself before January as well, so I don't, and, and I guess we could see what, how that goes.
Okay, so at least we're open to restoring, restoring it to, to the 25 budgeted amount.
And I would say the township hasn't been shy, like if they need additional funding, they've reached out, and we've tried to find funding in other areas of the budget, or the, but the board could make a budget amendment if needed to support that food bank or some other need that they have. But again, they only requested the 2,000 this year. So I'm hearing you're, you're interested in moving the $1,000 from ARA to the scholarships. Are there any other adjustments to finalize this for this, at this time?
I don't know where we would move it, but I think that in, in light of the service that we get from the alignment for collaborative education, the, the work that they do in our community with our children, with our businesses, our internships and, and all of the services that they offer, I see that their request was for 5,000. We kept them at the previous budgeted amount of 3,000, and I think that if any of these programs warrant an, an increase in, in benefits from, from the village, that alignment certainly should be considered for an increase in, in our contribution to, to that agency.
I, I will say, Herb, that the fire department has helped alignment with internships during the summer. Is that the right word, internships? So we're, we're benefiting them in multiple ways beyond the 3,000.
Yeah, and we did, the, the efforts of the police department, I mean, the fire department and the time that they take, and I think one year we had an intern in the HR department, and that the, those are not charged to here. This is actually writing a check and sending it to them. The other efforts are other areas of the budget that are absorbed, just, just for clear.
But their request was for 5,000, and we kept them at the previous budgeted amount. And I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can increase the, the budgeted amount from the 25 item of, of 3,000? I, I understand our internship programs and, and what we do, but they've made a request, and I'm just wondering, is there any way we can honor? And certainly we can't meet the 5,000, but maybe we can get some type of, of increase to express our commitment to supporting, supporting that operation.
So, could we also, so I see that we have increased by 1,000 from last year, from FY25 to FY26?
Yeah, 1,000.
Yeah, I, so, I think- For the what?
I think we can increase by a couple thousand so that we can respond to what trustee Porter is saying, and we can also respond to a couple other organizations as well. So we don't have to make any choices.
Yeah, I, just, just so you know why that $1,000 is there, is that's as the clerk, the village clerk spoke. She has a separate meeting with, it really falls in her budget, this line item, so she had requested an increase for those, for that program where she's seeing more students. But, yes, that's a, the board as a whole could increase the bottom line, we would just have to go back through the documents and-
Yeah.
Make several, you know, it changes the numbers significantly, but-
Yeah, I think we should do that. I think we should increase the bottom line because I'd also sent through the information. Is that when we buy the table, the 1,500? Don't we always buy a table?
So, the contribution that we, the village makes is the set amount, and then if it gets a table or if it, usually things, a benefit like a table or something comes to the village because of that donation. So, and if there's excess, then there usually isn't, but-
Yeah, given the extenuating circumstance of all the work that they're doing, all how they serve our community, new Americans, immigrant families, I'd like to see an increase there as well. So I think it does, and so we've, we've all talked about different organizations here tonight, so I think it, it actually does make sense to increase the, the bottom line for FY26 by several thousand.
I, I'm still trying to balance a budget, so if, if you can move things around, that would be better, but I understand if there's, in the end, it's your question.
Yeah, I think, I think if it would have been just one organization, it would have been a quick fix and it would have made sense, but trustee Porter's brought up one organization, I brought a couple up, there's an increase for Christie, so I, I think it makes sense to increase the budget. So I, I think it makes sense to increase the bottom line. That's all I have.
If we go with what's recommended on the board, that provides for our balanced budget.
Correct.
And, you know, maybe we can look at this earlier in the year instead of waiting till the end of the year, in the coming year and move some dollars around at that point.
Well, but I do need to know how we're going to proceed with this budget, at least for the approval for, at the next meeting.
Did all the people that requested last year get their money already this year?
I know that, I believe that there was one, maybe one or two that Sue's been calling to say, can you, you have funds available? And I have, I'd have to check.
Okay, I just was wondering if somebody like doesn't claim their money, like.
It would just go to the fund balance.
I, I, I also noticed that, again, in view of the environment that we find ourselves in, POC, which is doing yeoman's work in, in our community and with our immigrant community and, and Hannover Park is a welcoming community, we put through a request for, what was that?
No, it's five, they, they asked for five.
Five thousand. I'm trying to read the line.
Yes, they requested five thousand, they received five thousand.
And they got it last year too.
Okay, it's hard to follow the line, so they requested five and they got five?
Correct.
Okay.
And also in your, in the information that was provided was the chart that showed based, showed on how many people, how many Hannover Park residents were served by that organization and what other funding sources that those organizations received funds from. So I have that before me if you have any questions regarding that.
And didn't we have a discussion about Wings, about their impact in, in our community? And I see that they received, is that a four thousand dollar?
Wings are at four thousand.
They, they received three thousand five hundred last year, they requested five thousand and they're presenting four thousand for twenty twenty-six.
But didn't we, didn't we have a discussion about their reach within Hannover Park Wings?
In which way?
How many?
How many residents have served, you know, by, by that particular organization? Hannover Park residents?
The chart shows nine.
Chart shows how many?
Nine.
Nine people? And so with, with that limited of reach and we increased them to four thousand dollars, how do we justify it? How do we justify that?
You can move it, you can change it.
Juliana, where's the, where's the, where's this at?
It's in the portal.
So if you were, if you were to go to the email where?
When, that you received, it tells you where the agenda is?
Yeah.
And then go to the link that says OneDrive, you're going to be able to find it there.
So, given all the changes, are we able to talk about, have to finalize this stuff when we, when we celebrate?
No, we have to have the, but we, you approved to get the budget posted tonight, so we have to finalize it tonight.
So then, when the request that several thousand dollars, yeah, the bottom line?
Remy's going to have to go back tomorrow and change all of the num, if the, I mean, and we'll do this. But if there's a change to the bottom line number, then Remy needs to go back and change throughout the budget, the numbers and the budget message so that we can get the budget posted.
Well, I think we could take two thousand from Wings and, and.
No, no, I would oppose that.
These other, other organizations, we're only serving nine people, I mean.
Well, it goes beyond what the cost of nine people mean.
Where can we, where can we see that?
Wings is a credible organization.
Are you able to pull it up, Jed?
What?
Are you able to pull this chart up?
We used to give Wings five thousand and that wasn't enough.
Okay, but, and, and I hear you and I think that's why I'm saying, like, if you leave more, I would leave more time on this stuff. Like, if there's all these changes we want to make.
Somebody's just going to need to make a motion and, and we'll, I, we really need to hash this out this evening. I'm going to have Jed pull up that chart so that you can see the breakdown. But amongst you, you, I need you to make a motion or move things around or figure out how it's going to be.
Before we make that motion, can somebody that's champion of Wings tell me what the justification is? Because clearly I don't understand.
Sure, I've been on the Wings Board as a board member since I've been the mayor. And Wings is a vital component for disadvantaged, beaten women, it looks of proper terminology. And.
Battered women.
Bring them back, restore their dignity.
Can you make it smaller so that the whole thing?
If they're helping nine in our community, the cost beyond that for relocation, for services, to restore their vitality.
She's going to email.
With their family, you know, many have, women, mostly women, have children involved. So that, I mean, I can go on and on about that if, if I was really prepared tonight to do that.
No, I'm just, that, that's information that I didn't have, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
You know, many times.
So, so it's, it's for battered and abused women.
Yes.
Services that they provide.
Yeah, restore their dignity, bring them back in the community.
They do.
How much more needs to be put to the bottom line to fulfill your needs without going insane? Or, you know, like, like crazy?
One hundred thousand dollars.
No, I don't have that.
I'm just kidding, as soon as we get this in our email and we can read it, I will let you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to use that word.
No, no, I, I get it, I get it. This is difficult, I can speak to a lot of these nonprofits and they're all doing amazing work.
And, and I guess I would say is this has always been traditionally a token amount. It, it's never been meant to support these organizations fully, it's to show support. But it, we, as a municipality, have not been the significant donor to supporting these organizations.
Okay.
You know, and I'll say, we have a board member from Centro in the, sitting in the, in the room that they are relocating to a new site, so.
Outside or inside the community?
Inside.
Inside.
Inside?
Inside Hannover Park.
Yeah, within Hannover Park. So I think my motion would, my consideration would be, let's keep this as it is. But early in the year, let's look at this budget process for our charitable contributions. Let's revisit this rather than the eleventh hour, like tonight, actually the twelfth hour. This will help us with our, close up our budget.
Well, can I, can we try, can I just try once to see? So I heard that, I heard the mayor say he wanted to leave Wings as is. But I also heard that the Americans Association of Retired Asians, one thousand could be moved, moved to Scholar, to Youth Assistance Program, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
So that would make this zero and that the youth assist, or no, it was the Youth of the Year scholarships would be moved to four thousand? Okay, and then I heard you wanted to give more to Centro, is that what I heard?
Yes.
And is that, that you would then make them two thousand additional five hundred dollars?
Uh, no, I think an additional thousand. And ACP, Herb was saying the official five years ACP, so the amendment would be fifteen hundred.
Wait, wait, so you want to make Centro two thousand five hundred?
Yeah, they're doing a lot. And they're moving into the community from, yeah.
And what was the other one, Trustee Porter, that you were adding to?
Alignment.
Five hundred.
He said five hundred.
Five hundred, so it would be thirty-five hundred?
Correct.
So. Where are we at, Remy?
One thousand five hundred.
More?
Extra.
More.
One thousand five hundred more, so instead of thirty-five thousand five hundred, it would be thirty-seven thousand. Thirty-seven thousand. Is everybody okay with that? So let me just read it, Alive, five thousand, Centro, two thousand five hundred, Dupe Senior Center, three thousand, Wings, four thousand, Little City, one thousand five hundred, five thousand for POC, four thousand for Youth of the Year scholarships, three thousand for Youth Assistance Program, Alignment would be three thousand five hundred, two thousand for Hannover Township Foundation with the understanding that if there's stress later in the year and things don't get better, we'll readjust. Zero for American Association of Retired Asians. And again, that they did not apply Boys and Girls Club, two thousand two hundred and fifty, NAACP Gale, one thousand two hundred and fifty. And just so you know, I think that covers the full cost of the table we checked. So, and nothing to North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic. Are we okay with all that?
Yes.
I question your North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic.
You questioned it?
Yeah, I do that, yeah.
I don't know where, did you, I don't know if you.
I sit on the board of North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic. North, there's two people, two entities practicing immigration legal work here in Hannover Park. And it's partners for our communities and North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic. So our very difficult cases, which are unaccompanied minors, we give to them. And when they take on a case, it's not for just this thing, it's for the life of the case. Okay, so sometimes we're talking about ten or fifteen years of a case. And as you know with immigration, it's going to take forever. So I, I do question zero to North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic. They've been working in Hannover Park since two thousand twenty. They've been staying fine.
Are they funded at all through the POC?
No.
The POC doesn't provide them any funding?
No. And we have a board member for POC here, we can speak to that, they, we do not.
I believe you.
No, we don't, POC don't.
And would, would the POC, would it be, make sense to have part of the POC's funding go towards the legal aid? Because you said you, they have similar goals?
No, they don't have similar, they're the experts in the room for difficult cases. So, well, we're doing your asylum, your change of status, we're finding, we're doing habeas, habeas petitions, et cetera. They do the detained cases, are very difficult cases. They also, FYI, when Wings has a battered person in this area, they are the attorney that picks it up for, for the domestic violence. So they have an immigration wing, they have a housing wing, housing rights and evictions, and they have a domestic violence wing.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I, it's not up there any longer, but based on the information they provided to us, number of Hannover Park residents served in the previous year, zero. Number of residents, total contribution per resident served, zero, so.
I think that they weren't gathering that data, but I can personally tell you that we have referred the cases to them and they have accepted them.
I think it's wrong.
So what does the application say?
I think it's twenty-five.
Yeah, it's five, or twenty-five.
It's twenty-five, so that's twenty-five per year residents with very difficult cases.
Okay, what is, what is, and we have two, we have two other things under my report to talk about and a closed session tonight, so what is, what, are we adding something to that line item? Or are we going to address it?
I would recommend you give them the five thousand. This year alone, we hold legal clinic.
We don't have five thousand dollars to balance this budget.
Legal clinics every Tuesday in, in Hannover Park alone and they take on the heavy hitting. So whatever you can do, but I would not zero this, this organization.
Again, I, I reiterate that we're not, this is, we have to balance our budget.
These are also the people that come and do your, know your rights.
I, I understand, I understand. I need, I'm going, we're going to have to go find it from other areas of the budget to make these adjustments, so.
So in the original, you had it at five thousand?
No, they requested five thousand.
And how much did you put for?
We did not put in anything, they did not, they were not ones that we had, had in previous years.
So again, I think given the extenuating circumstances, all the workers, you know, all the families that are being impacted.
How about a thousand? How about a thousand? As in, sorry. How about we add a thousand, they're a new group, they're twenty-five residents. I understand what's going on, if things get more difficult, again, just when, like you are.
I just, I want to say, I want to tell you, when you say it's twenty-five residents, we're talking about twenty-five lifetime legal cases in immigration. So it's.
I understand, and the mayor's, I don't want to go down a path where everyone is advocating for each of these because I, I'm not trying to say one is stronger than the other or more important than the other or more of a hardship than the other. So I would suggest that we, can we put in a thousand? And then when you readdress Hannover, the Township Food Bank, if that gets more stressed in January, you can address this as well too.
So I want that reflected in a minute somewhere, that we would re, readdress this for North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic and for the others as well.
Agreed.
And we could amend the budget just like we do anything.
You could, you just have to make sure you have the funds to do that. Okay, so this whole thing is thirty-eight thousand with a thousand going to Legal Aid Clinic?
Correct.
It's a start.
Okay, that's it, so everybody's okay with the bottom line of thirty-eight thousand?
Correct, correct.
Okay, you will have the budget then for your consideration and approval at the next meeting. The next item, Trustee Bancoli, the staff, and it's in your packet, had evaluated the vetting suggestions of LexisNexis and another software, two softwares, another software, there were two different versions. We had come back with a staff memo to the board outlining how we did not think that it met what you were trying to accomplish and to be able to provide the information that I think we sensed that you were hoping to get out of the programs. And so that, that memo was presented to the board. Trustee Bancoli had suggested that we have an opportunity to allow the board to ask staff and the village attorney any questions regarding that process and why that decision was made beyond what the memo said. So Courtney is available to walk through the memo with you this evening to, and then staff can, and the village attorney can answer any questions.
So thank you for this information. Given the time and the things that we have to, we have executive session?
We have closed session, yes.
Yeah, is this something that could be discussed at the special meeting that we have in a week? Or the special meeting, the other special meeting on December first?
It cannot be part of December, we will not have time on December first.
Yeah, we could do it under your report at the next meeting too.
Nope, I don't.
Can we, can we move this to another meeting?
Of, yes, we can, I just, we'll just have to figure out when we can do that.
Can we do that to December fourth?
Sure, under my report? Yes, yes, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Can you have somebody remember?
Thank you. Okay, so then the next item is the monthly treasures report of September twenty twenty-five. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Is this, is this one I could ask about firefighter succession planning?
Wait, just a second, so let me make a note of this other.
December fourth.
What was your question?
So at the last, at the budget meeting?
Yes.
I was cut off and told that we would continue that discussion during your report on November sixth.
So, we had a conversation after the board meeting.
Correct.
At length.
Yeah.
So it was a very lengthy conversation and detailed with the chief.
Yeah.
During that, I explained that the board had set for a strategic plan goal for staff to do an in-depth analysis of the fire department staffing and model, staffing model, as well as other department staffing. Because as I had said during the. Because as I had said during the strategic planning exercise, that every department had expressed stress in staffing and that they would like to see and thought it would be a benefit for more staff. And that this budget wasn't able to accommodate additional staff. So, the recommendation that you have does not include, the budget does not include additional staff. But that we were going to take in the next year, in 2026, a very close look at staffing, staffing models, and make a recommendation back to the board. And I had committed that it wouldn't be that we had to wait all the way until the 2027 budget, but that we could have a discussion, workshops, whatever, to, to have that discussion and present. We are not in a position to have a discussion or make any decisions regarding staffing at any, in any of the departments at this time. But I, but I do note that you have concerns in that area.
Yeah, so, I think when it, and I had mentioned, when it comes to our first responders, given that they're going to likely be responding to more things in and around our community, that there is, I think, some urgency. I took it upon myself to learn a little bit more just about staffing as it relates to our fire department. From what I understand, when we are, so, so we have a split model. We have full-time and then we also have part-time. And from what I understand, a healthy fire department as it relates to part-time for us and a community our size and just given the pressures, would be around fourteen people. And we are at three people right now. So, when I state that this is urgent, I believe that this is very urgent. And things are going to get worse. And so, I do not believe that we can wait another full year for our fire department to be working their tails off. Because that is burnout. That is quite literally burnout. And so, I feel very, very strongly about, about making sure that the health and the well-being of our first responders is up to par. We were a few sure, I would say, okay, but we're, a healthy department is fourteen and we're at three? I mean, and it's long hours? That's not right. And so, I hear you, Juliana, I do. I know this isn't easy. I hear you. But we can't go another year.
And, and that's why-
Three people doing the work of fourteen people.
We have a mo-
It's not good for mental health, it's not good for well-being, and things are going to get worse.
We need to do an analysis?
We, we had a study done. We, we need to update that. Whether we do it in-house or go out of house, we will have that discussion. We will have a discussion about whether even a part-time program is best for this community going forward. But it is a very complex discussion. It's a complex analysis. It's people's lives. And the last thing I want to do is hire additional employees that I then have to turn around and let go the following year. And the one, the last ones in are the first ones out. So, we are going to make this analysis thorough. We're going to determine what's best for the organization, and we will make a recommendation to the board as to staffing. You have the final decision on staffing, but this is a really important, and again, it's not just the fire department.
When is the analysis?
The analysis is, what's the model?
But when and will it take place?
It's, I, it's in the strategic plan. We said that it would be done in 2026. I've had conversations, at least on the fire side, with the chief, and he, I asked him to begin gathering the data over the next couple of months so that when the new village manager is here after the first of the year, that that person can get well-educated quickly and help make a decision and a recommendation.
And that's for the entire village, that analysis? Or just for the fire department?
The fire chief is working on the fire department data.
No, but for the one that we're doing in our strategic plan is looking at all of our departments across the board.
Yes, I think that there are other departments that are in need of analysis, maybe not as complicated as the analysis as the fire department will be, but HR will have, will have that as a goal.
We instituted a raise for the part-time firefighters during the past year. I remember voting for that. Did that have a beneficial effect on keeping at least the three part-timers that we have? And is that likely to-
Well, that, that number is fluctuating. We spend a lot of time working on hiring and trying to recruit and retain. We do, the part-time firefighters are part of a fire, a union collective bargaining agreement.
Are we likely to attract more part-time firefighters based on the pay level that we have set now?
I think that the pay is only one component of why somebody will come and why somebody will stay.
Well, I've been out training with the firefighters and seen a live fire burn. And to me, it looks like a good organization that would be, you know, enticing candidates to come and train and work alongside them. You know, to my eye, they look great. If that's true, is there something else we can do to-
Well, I mean, different departments, we could have a whole meeting on this, this issue, but, I mean, some departments have paramedics and only, and just firefighters. We have firefighters, do you have a fast way of saying that? We have firefighters that are also paramedics, and we only take that model. Do we want to look at changing that? That could be one of the analyses. I'm not suggesting that that's a good model. But there are various formats and models for fire staffing. And we need to take the time, if we're going to make a change that's long-lasting, to do it and not rush it.
So, thank you.
And, and the chief knows that there, he may have to shift the responsibilities of the fire department so that they are not as stressed. That, we understand that. And that-
You can speak to that as well, to some extent. So, sorry, but, chief, before you speak to that, so given the, so trustee Gutierrez, thanks for asking when the timeline is. So, given the urgency, is there, and I guess I look to chief for guidance, I look to Juliana for guidance, just on clarity. Is there a way in which, given the urgency, we could focus on the firefighters in the first couple of months of the year? And then, when we talk about the rest of the entire strategic plan, that we focus on those changes for the, thank you, remaining departments as well?
I, I think that that's- I think that's possible, but I would caution everybody to make the assumption-
It's unreasonable.
Unreasonable?
I think it's unreasonable. Expect it to get done in the first two months. There are alternatives for part-time components that we need to have part of that conversation?
I didn't say get done.
Pardon me? Oh, I didn't hear it right.
So, it has, it doesn't have to get done, but, so what, what I'm hearing is that the larger strategic plan is going to take place in 2026. When in 2026, we don't know. What I, what I'm saying is that one portion of the plan, within a few months' time and earlier in the year, addressing it, not the whole thing in 2026.
So, you're just saying to prioritize and front-load the fire department part of the analysis first?
Given the emergency, yes. Yeah.
There you go.
See, I see a component where we could really enhance the part-time.
Right, but I think-
Correct, correct. I, you have, okay, I understand that you think, and, and there is a need, and I agree with you, that there's a need to look at the fire department and the fire department staffing and model. And I understand that you've had more discussions with fire, with the fireside component. But the, all of the staff that sits behind me has requested and expressed stress amongst their departments and the ability to keep up and provide the services to this organization based on the staffing that they have. So, I would appreciate it if everyone would take and understand that it's not just the fire department that needs to be looked at next year. Okay? All of them have stress. All of them come to me on a regular basis and ask for staff. And I am unable to fulfill that need right now. So, if we want to start raising taxes and finding other revenue sources and doing all of that, you are all passionate about the previous topic. I am passionate about this. They all work for me every single day. So, please, respect that I am trying my hardest to meet their need as well as yours. But it is not an easy task. Please, we will do it, we will look at it after, after the beginning of the year. We have set it as a strategic plan, and we will focus on it and do what's best for the employees of the organization.
Thank you. Can we move on?
I don't have anything further, unless anyone has any questions about the monthly treasures report.
Please, clerk.
Yay, Special Events Committee met yesterday. Switching topics here. Just wanted to give everybody a heads-up. Tree lighting is December fifth from 5:30 to 7:30. The Rangers are back. And we are also collecting coats and hats and gloves for the POC to get those kids nice and warm this holiday season. Photos with Santa for kids, families, and puppies. Will be Monday, December eighth and the fifteenth from six to seven. And I'm working with Anita at the music store to come and do some caroling there as well. So, that should be a little fun activity. And then, I just want to do a quick shout-out to Courtney on doing an amazing job with partnering with the Park District and working with them on the 2026 events. Summer soiree is going to be super fun. Movies in the park and music in the park with the Park District is going to be moved to Wednesdays this year so that we can all attend and it will be on Thursday during our board meeting. So, I'm very excited to attend those. And partnering with some more doggy events since we see our residents love those. And then, also, we are working, Jenny was there at Special Events yesterday, thank you for coming, the 250th birthday party for America. So, we will be kind of interjecting all of that into some of our events coming up this year, working with the Park District, libraries, colleges, all kinds of fun stuff. So, lots of new, fun, exciting things. And we are going to try to plug it into some of your committees as well so that we can all kind of be doing stuff around our events. So, be ready for that, guys. That is all.
Thank you. Corporation Council?
I'll report.
Thank you. Trustee Bancoli?
Thank you. I want to start by acknowledging that I fully recognize that each department and the work that they do plays a role in the success of this village. I value the work of each and every department. But I also understand that certain jobs have different types of stresses, right? Running into a burning house is a different type of stress than the work that you might be able to do inside a building. I'm not saying that I do not value the work of each and every department. But I also am cognizant of different types of stresses. I guess, I want to make that very clear. And I say this to the staff, please know that I value the work that you do and that the role that you play in this organization. Please know that. I will just go back to what I stated before. So, I had made a motion, things got confusing. I had made a motion that moving forward, if a trustee makes a motion on an ordinance or a resolution, and then we move forward with drafting said ordinance and resolution, that the trustee that made that motion should be present when it's being drafted. There's been too many times where we received what we asked for, and it's not what we asked for. And so, that is the motion that I had started to make in our previous discussion. I am now remaking that motion. And I would ask for a second.
I actually have a question.
Okay, yeah.
Can I interject a question?
Or, or discussion, discussion.
The motion has to continue.
There's no second.
Discussion.
We don't have a second for this. Let's move on.
No, our second until we have the discussion.
Okay, can I ask my question?
Yeah.
How does, what is a workaround, then? So that when you have the clerk, the village president, and the trustee present, you're not breaking OMA?
So, then it-
I don't make the ordinances, just the ordinance.
You don't?
I do not do any of the ordinances, no one. And neither does the mayor.
So, so this is about the, the trustee working side-by-side with village council?
The attorney and village attorney, yeah. Where drafts the ordinance. I don't know how, I'm not-
Yeah, it turns, how does it look, what does it look like?
Well, I don't know how Bernie, who drafts ordinances based on what is heard with dialogue, with other discussion and input, how that would work to, for him to side-by-side sit and draft when he's here on Tuesdays and Thursdays, when he does stuff from, when he's not in the office. I'm not clear how that would. And I guess, I guess I ask, what are we trying to address? Because, so the same meeting received a resolution, you would like it in a different format, or you would like to have a discussion about it, or you would, and I heard that it was, you liked it to have more teeth, or it may worded differently. The, you took the action to not take action on that item so that it could be amended and there's going to be this is a figure issue, so there's going to be more discussion at a workshop. But you, as a board, have the ability, once a draft is brought to you, to amend the language, to change the language, or to bring it back for consideration in a different format. So, sitting next to the village attorney in his office during a set hours and trying to draft something, and I, and I would say, just because an elected, one elected official makes a motion, if there's a vote, it's really not, it's no longer that one trustee's motion and issue, it's the whole board's issue. And so, the whole board can't sit with the village attorney and draft an ordinance.
So, I would suggest, I would suggest something different.
So, that's my concern.
I would suggest something different, that we go to, you suggest that, what do you call it, an ordinance or a resolution or something, that we go to a first reading and a second reading. So, the first reading would be for discussion to finalize that for the second reading. That makes more sense to me. It's done in other communities, we've never done it that way. But I think what you're asking for, which would have probably been good for me today, you know, is to have the first reading come forward, we can have our discussion, modify, make changes, and then move forward. That would be-
I, I, yes. I think we, I think we essentially, we did have, when I first got started, a long time ago, the first reading, second reading format. But then, there were ordinances that the board felt like they couldn't move forward right away because they didn't have any changes, and it was stuck because we were on first reading, and so we couldn't be final action. So, the discussion of the board at the time was, we have the ability that if the ordinance wasn't in final form, or a resolution wasn't in final form, or we wanted different discuss, more discussion, is we always could just not vote on it at that meeting and move into a next meeting for further discussion. So, you're essentially having a first reading, second reading in this case, but there might be ordinances where you don't need to have that. I would suggest that on a bigger issue like this, that maybe we would have at the last meeting said, this is a big issue, let's have works, let's workshop it, let's, let's have a discussion about it before.
So, so if we go back to that first reading, second reading, on some of these, we can say, we can make a motion not to go to second reading, or we could just?
If it's, if it's a set first, second, first and third, you can weigh in, but the way it used to be was every ordinance had a first reading and a second reading.
My God, that's going to be a lot.
And in some cases, it's not necessary.
Right. So, we can't, when, when requesting said ordinance, to say, we request that this ordinance has a first and second reading?
You can do that. Or you could just say, we'd like to see a draft of it beforehand and have a discussion on the next board meeting, and we won't take a vote. And it just prevents you from taking a vote at that meeting if you were ready to take a vote.
Yeah, I, I think-
Like, if tonight you were ready to take a vote on that resolution, you could have done that. If tonight you were ready to take a vote on that resolution, you could have done that. You weren't ready, so you chose to bring it back at a later date to a workshop, and then obviously to another board meeting.
Well, it's not that we weren't ready, it's that the resolution didn't have what we asked for, right? And the way to avoid that is on the front end, to partner together and ensure that what we're requesting is in the resolution, so we don't have to do double work, right?
But then it's not before the whole board. So, a first reading, second reading would have been great for me, you know?
Well, it wasn't before the whole board when you, Bernie and Juliana, made the first resolution, right? And then we, we get into all these problems, and it keeps happening again and again and again. So, let's avoid all of that.
How many times do... How many times do we actually vote on resolutions and ordinances? I mean, it's, they're not always in our agenda. They come up rather...
At least two to five a meeting.
Ordinances?
Yes.
Ordinances that...
And resolutions.
That we're going to do, and, and resolutions like the one that we were proposing for this evening. I know we have the, the agenda items that we vote on, but as I look...
So, today you had a liquor license, you had Metropolitan Water Agency planning, and you have the tech. So, yes, there was three items that we have to sign and have to...
So, a quick poll.
But those are resolutions, those weren't ordinances, right? What were the ordinances?
Ordinances with the liquor license, and the other two are resolutions. We still vote on all of them.
Well, maybe, maybe we don't have the solution tonight, but I think something needs to change, because we, we can't keep, we can't keep doing this. So, I guess...
I do think that, I would say, that the last discussion at this, at the diocese with everyone going back and forth on what in... It's difficult having that, following that level of discussion and back and forth to determine exactly what everybody wants. So, a workshop is better to catch things up.
I can understand that. But I would also, I think, appreciate if our attorney is available to ask questions. If there is maybe, if, if we're doing a lot of back and forth and it's not clear, asking for...
Well, I just, I would say, the, uh, one. I think it's handy and grateful to do what you're saying, uh, to get us, to trust me. Because every time something will get re-located, you have to schedule, you know, when, when you vote it. And there's basically a sudden need for your, for your, you know, for your, for your... Every one of them, a third particular issue, they come together. So, I think the, if you are concerned about a particular thing, you could simply say, you can get rejected. And then you have it, and then if you want to discuss it, you can discuss it.
Before it's public.
When it's being rejected, in other words, when it's... So, I usually draft stuff, uh, dates before it's officially done.
Yeah, I mean, this...
And, and I think...
But wait, wait, but I, I've asked for this before.
You've asked for what?
I've asked to see ordinances that we have... I remember, because when we did the welcoming ordinance, I asked to see it before it went live. And I was told that that was not something that could happen, and then we ended up doing a whole workshop and all this stuff. So, now you're saying that this is something...
But I, it's not now I'm saying. I didn't say that through the first reading, okay? I'm saying to you, and all the board members, that if they are proponents of an ordinance or a resolution or anything, that I am about, and the, um, the board is going to be considering. Uh, and you want to be kind of be like, it's rejected, you know, this one is... I'm working with the sun.
And, and that, that...
So, why don't we just do that automatically, though? Right? Because, because Juliana is saying like, hey, it's kind of hard sometimes when you guys are all talking to each other, and I understand it probably is. So, why wouldn't that just happen?
The workshop, that's not all the specific, the one that's on the agenda. If only us four of you could accept how we can power. It would be not very easy for me to put it out there. When I came there, it was on Sunday, right before the agenda was held. I came to the village hall, completely staying, not getting rejected anymore. I just, I said, we're being held, and what was in that meeting, oh, it's what I heard. They had a snack the usual way of it being done. But it was done that way because the board wanted it. And I even said at that meeting, that it's so urgent and I'm going to be out of town, you could get someone else to bring it to you. So, when I came, not Tuesday, but the village, it had not, I mean, I, anyone, I did it. The mayor, the mayor had gone, that's what I was told, to, uh, Dupage County, and told, that they have the Dupage County version of whatever it was, and they had to have the... So, that's all due.
Okay.
So, I don't think that you can generalize that with everything that goes on here. Because I think you were fully warned that you were trying to organize, publish up, that I was going to have a problem doing that, not seeing it.
So, I understand what you're saying. I'm generalizing in the sense that this is not the first time that this has happened, and there was an urgency to get this before the board, because brown people are being kidnapped on our streets and being... No, I, I let you speak. They're being dehumanized and kidnapped. And so, there is a sense of urgency, right? There was three weeks between October 16th and, and November 16th.
I was gone for 10 days.
I understand that, but that is why we asked for the urgency.
Then why you should get another lawyer to do it?
That is not my responsibility, and you know that, okay? So, let's just move forward, and, and you've mentioned that we could have something emailed to us. I welcome that. I, I would love that. I would love it to happen automatically.
But then you're breaking one, we're not all together.
Okay, and that's what, and again, that's what was told to me the last time.
May I, may I interject? Can I, can I interject? So, when we were doing the welcoming ordinance, that was pretty new back then. Because I was so passionate about it, what I did is, I requested that it be a workshop, one. And the second thing is, I then called the mayor and Bernie, and I said, I want to see what you're doing. And I requested a special meeting, and I ended up speaking with the mayor about it. And that's when we started that conversation. So, I think, I think for me, what I will do is, when something is this important, like, like I did today, I will motion for it to be a workshop, and then I will ask for that, a draft of that resolution. If that's okay with you, and, and I think that that's one thing that we can do on our own, regardless.
And, and, and I just want to say, when I mentioned that, you know, how many resolutions and ordinances, I wasn't talking about general resolutions and ordinances. I was talking about those that are put forward from the diocese, that trustees are asking for a resolution or asking for an ordinance. I understand that we vote on a ton of resolutions and ordinances at every meeting, but there are not many instances when from the diocese and from, from the trustees that we're putting forward ordinances and resolutions. So, those are the ones that I was wondering, is there a protocol, or is there a process where we can have a first and second reading for those type of, of ordinances that come from the diocese, that come from, from, from the trustees for a first and second reading? Not everything that's coming forward in an agenda.
Well, it would have been a lot cleaner for me on this one, if we had a first and second.
Yeah, that, that was what I was trying to refer, and, and I think I maybe didn't state it quite as clearly as that.
Because sometimes workshops don't always work for everybody, and then we end up gaffing. So, if we do a first and second reading for, as you said, something that comes from the diocese, and we have some good things that come from the diocese.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't want to get caught in the trick, baby, again. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
You know?
So, was that a motion? So, then I, I withdraw my motion, and then...
We could do that as a matter of practice, right?
I think I need to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I second, yeah, withdraw my second.
And then we make that one.
Now, do I, do I need to make this a formal motion?
No.
No, it's just the, ju- just what we'll do.
Well, you, yeah, it's a matter of practice. We'll say, we'll be a first reading, second reading. That would, that would work for me, because...
And there may be situations where you're like, you say, let's workshop it, and then...
Okay, yeah.
I think it's...
We'll have that flexibility. Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Brockley.
Oh, no report.
Thank you. Trustee Alba.
Yeah, Mayor, just one quick note. For Veterans Day, the keynote speaker is the commander of the local Illinois Army National Guard Infantry Battalion, First of the One Seven Eight, Lieutenant Colonel Andrew Salmo. He's recently returned from deployment with his infantry battalion, completely intact, brought all his soldiers back from combat, um, from, from the Middle East. So, I want to highlight that for people that are coming to the Veterans Day.
Anybody, time?
Veterans Day, 7:00 PM at the Village.
November 11th.
Lieutenant Colonel Andrew Salmo will be writing insights at the, as a keynote speaker. That's, that concludes my report.
Yeah, I will take him to dinner before him.
Oh, that's lovely, Mayor. I, I'd love to attend as well, because he's really good friend of mine.
You're welcome.
Are we going to add that to the calendar? It's on the calendar?
Lisa, your report.
Oh, yes. Mayor, thank you. I think that you lie awake at night worried on how to solve all our issues. And I've told you this before, you're not alone here. There's all of us. And I hope that, that you can count on us and discuss these things with us so that when we, we have issues like ordinances versus resolutions, we can talk about it together, right? I want to remind you that November 8th, we're having the Hysterical Committee doing an archiving event here from 10:00 to 12:00. So, if you're not doing anything on a Saturday at 10:00, come on over. I think we're going to have donuts, too. The Basket Brigade is taking place on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Is anybody from the board participating?
Yep.
What dates are you all doing?
23rd.
23rd? 23rd it is, okay. And then finally, I want to thank the Police Department. A young lady was distracted for what seemed like a nanosecond, and, in front of my home, and she drove right into a sign that gives a speed limit, and the sign is down. Do I have to call Public Works to get it put back up?
Public Works.
Yes, you know where I live, so, but thank you to the Police Department for... There was like five cop cars that showed up. It was like crazy. Thankfully, she's okay, but it was amazing what just one half a second or nanosecond of distracted driving can do. So, thank you for our Police Department for, actually, they came towards me, asking me if I was all right, and I was like, no, I'm just a homeowner, that lady over there crying. So, thank you so much for being kind to her and giving her grace, and, and I appreciate Public Works fixing our sign. That's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, trustee Porter.
Thank you. I want to start off by reading an executive order banning the use of Cook County-owned property and resources for civil immigration enforcement that was released by Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle. She signed an executive order number 2025-1 that prohibits the use of county-owned property, resources, and personnel for civil immigration enforcement activities. The order will prevent immigrations and custom enforcement, ICE, from using county-owned property and resources for civil immigration enforcement actions, including staging and debriefing from operations. Cook County is proud to be a welcoming county, committed to protecting the safety, dignity, and human rights of all residents, said Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle. It is critical that the government's interaction with the public adhere to our nation's laws and values. Yet ICE's increasingly aggressive, inhumane, and unlawful actions continue undermining the safety and stability of our communities. We will do everything we can to ensure all residents receive fair treatment, and our communities are safe from fair, from harassment and intimidation. So, and it says, this order builds on prior resolutions in Cook County's 2011 ordinance that prohibits the use of county facilities and personal time for ICE investigations without a criminal warrant. Executive Order 2025 prohibits use of county-owned property, including buildings, parking lots, garages, and vacant lots for ICE activity. So, and, and there's more, but I, I, I won't take, take up any more time. But that is a decisive action that has been taken by the board president in Cook County. And I think it clearly represents the difference in attitude between Dupage County and between Cook County, because Cook County is obviously and clearly more aggressive in their stance against ICE, whereas Dupage has been a little more laid back and, and maybe more subtle in, in how they're trying to deal with it. And we are a dual county committee, community, and I think that we need to, when we take these actions, we need to take into consideration that we're bi-county. We, we live half in Cook County, half in Dupage, and we must take the considerations of both counties when we come up with the actions that we go forward with. I respect what Dupage County, the state's attorney, and the sheriff, and those people, you know, their positions, but I also have great respect for the Cook County side of this and the position that they take. And I think when we come forward as Hanover Park with our continuing deliberations on what we're going to do with a resolution or with an ordinance, that we have to consider the nature of both sides of our, of our city, the Cook County and the Dupage County side. I want to offer congratulations to Ma- to Mayor Moadami, Moadami in New York for his, huh? Mandami, I spelt it wrong. Mon, no, I can't read my reading. Mandami, for his resounding victory in New York. I think it represents a very exciting time for America as we look to new leadership and, and new direction in our major cities, and, and I'm very proud of the campaign that they, that they ran. I also want to recognize Dupage Associate Judges that were installed today. Justice Judge Todd Scouso and Judge Tara Costa Howard were both installed as new associate judges in Dupage County. And they're both excellent people, and I offer them my sincerest congratulations. I was there at the installation. It was an overflow. They had to use an overflow room, and they had to zoom it. It was, it was pretty exciting to be there, to watch these two new appointees to the Dupage County judicial system. One thing that I, I have run across, I served on the Northwest Mayor and Managers Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and I ran across an article that caused me to think. I know that we have come up with language and, and resolutions regarding e-bikes and the, the whole issue of that, and how we're going to try and, and legislate and control and ensure the safety of both our young people and even adults who ride these vehicles. And some, for, for some people, they're vital means of transportation for how they get to and from work. They ride these electronic bikes and these electronic scooters. Uh, they ride these electronic bikes and these electronic scooters, and it's not all children, it's not all teenagers. There are adults, working individuals who, this has provided a cheap mode of transportation, and they use these to get to and from work. And I think that, uh, when we put forth our resolutions and our ordinances regarding these vehicles, which I am strongly in favor of, but we also have to take into consideration that for some people, this is a vital mean of transportation. Uh, there is, uh, a course and a class that's being used in California called E-Bike Sense Training. And what this is, is very similar to the type of training that a person goes through to get a, a motorcycle license in order to have, uh, a, a license, uh, to, to operate a motorcycle in town. You have to take specialized courses, um, and certain trainings. Now, I'm not asking that we issue certificates or licenses for people to operate these e-bikes, but I think that would be valuable if we went into our elementary schools and to our junior highs and our high schools and had a program where we offered this e-bike training, which brings up the educational level of the operators of these, of these vehicles. So that they know the safety, they know the rules of the road when you're riding these, where it's permissible to ride it, uh, where it's not, uh, the dangers of riding it, uh, proper maintenance, uh, lighting, you know, what has to be lit, uh, uh, safety signals on, on the bikes, turn signals, mirrors, all of those type of things. And this e-bike course that is offered, uh, it's ebikescence.com. But I would like for us to contact the community in, in California, I believe it's Santa Monica, that is offering this, and see if we can maybe take some parts of this and then begin to offer it to our young people. Because I think that if we're gonna legislate, we have to educate. So it's not just enough to legislate and tell people what can and can't be done and what they can and can't do. I think we gotta educate them on how to safely operate within the parameters of whatever laws and rules that we're, we're setting up. Uh, it's unfair to do one without the other. So I think it's incumbent upon us to, if not this program, but to think of a similar type of program where we offer some type of educational resource, uh, that we can target our young people, our elementary school, our middle schoolers, and our high schoolers, but also make it available even to the adults in the community, uh, and, and have that type of a program. Uh, and I'd like to see, you know, maybe we could put something together for early summer of two thousand and twenty-six, figure out a way how we can fund it, how we can do it, and, uh, present that to our community. I think that we owe them that, uh, if we're going to, uh, truly be, truly be about trying to provide a safe environment for the use of these vehicles, cause they're here. They're not going anywhere, and they're getting smaller and they're getting faster. And, uh, you know, I, I, I just see that we gotta meet this problem head-on and come up with some of those type of solutions. Um, the other two items have already been mentioned. Uh, I was gonna talk about the FBI memo, warning of imposters, uh, that are creating, uh, uh, criminal acts, uh, kidnappings, robberies, uh, all under the guise of being Border Patrol and ICE agents. Uh, one instance where they went into a, a retail establishment, tied up the individuals, uh, robbed the cash register, took the ATM machine, uh, and, and it's happened multiple times. And so much so that the FBI, who is no friend of the, the anti-immigration effort or, and, and totally backed what the immigration, uh, and Border Patrol are doing, put out this memo warning of, of false agents, uh, masquerading as ICE Patrol and, and Border Patrol. With that in mind, I'm wondering why can't we have our police officers, without infringing on the federal rights of, of legitimate law enforcement officers, ask for identification when we spot them in town to make sure that we're not dealing with imposters? Uh, is there, you know, what, what is the law that would keep us, uh, our police officers, uh, in, in a non-aggressive way, but simply asking for identification to make sure that these people are who they say they are? Uh, because they could very well be criminals disguising themselves as ICE and Border Patrol. And if the FBI has put out a memo stating that this is the case and that this is happening, I think that may open the door for us to, to be able to question these, these masked individuals when we find them on the street, uh, for our agencies to be able to say, uh, we're not gonna infringe on your right, you know, to do what you do, but could you please provide us with proper identification so that we know that we're dealing with a legitimate law enforcement agency here in town? Uh, and, and, and I would like to explore that, the legality of that. I don't expect you to have answers for that, you know, tonight unless maybe you've already looked into it. But I would like for us to explore that, uh, and, you know, find out what the legalities are and what the restrictions are on us asking for identification from these agents. Especially now that we've been alerted by the FBI that they're imposters that are out there. I think they've opened the door for us to ask for identification. Uh, and I think that, you know, maybe gives us a, a legitimate reason to, to request that. Um, also want to emphasize, our food pantries are gonna, are now in desperately in need of, of donations. Uh, and I would like to, at our next board meeting, uh, come up with a program. Uh, I don't know if we have a collection basket downstairs for, for donations. And so I would like to publicize that and really get it out to the community that we are accepting donations to support our food pantry.
Yeah, uh, the special events talked about it yesterday as well. So we're working on that to get to all four food pantries and put them everywhere, so we're on that. Yes, that's what Tricia said yesterday.
Okay, great. So we're on, on top of that?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
The more we can talk about it, the better.
Yes, please share it, and once we get the flyer ready, we'll throw it out.
Okay, all right. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Conkle?
Yes, I have fifty things to talk about, but forty-seven of them, we've talked about already. Uh, I know this past Sunday was, uh, we all fell back an hour. But the people that didn't fall back an hour were the ones that have dogs. Dogs are not geared to that. So if you had a dog, I'm sure you didn't get that extra hour of sleep. Uh, Santa arrived at Woodfield today, tonight, six o'clock. All the little dinglery thingies out, outside were out there. So if you want any pictures with Santa, you can't wait till ours in December, go there. We also had Emma Nava, she's a seventh grader, uh, from town.
Emma?
She's actually reading stories at the Filament Theater in, uh, Chicago.
Oh.
On November fourteenth to twenty-third. She got picked out of seven other seventh graders, uh, to read stories, so that's all I have. I just figured I'd leave all my notes.
So wait, so one of our seventh graders from Springwood?
From Hanover Park is reading stories at the Filament Theater in Chicago.
Can you tell me?
I November fourth.
November, fourteenth?
November fourteenth to twenty-third.
Through the twenty-third.
They didn't, they didn't have the time, but there's a website with other tickets and all that.
Perfect, okay. Okay, thank you. Very exciting, thank you.
It's my report.
Mayor, please.
Okay, um-
Exec session?
Yeah, we're going to go into executive session. Right, so, right, so the executive session is under section two, C two, deliberations concerning salary schedule for one or more classes of employees, and two, C one, the appointment, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee. Do I have a motion that we're gonna go into executive session and we will not return?
We cannot close the meeting, no. We cannot close the meeting. We can? Nope, it's against them.
Okay.
The motion is to go into executive session. We can close in executive session.
Okay, a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
And call the roll?
Trustee Broccolino?
Who's there second?
Yes, yes. Trustee Alba?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conkle?
Yes.
And Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
And we, uh, will close in executive session.
We will close in executive session.
Okay.